February 3, special session.
Good morning, everyone. We're going to stand and do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is our kickoff to our budget meetings. And Jake, if you could, could you do roll call?
McCombs?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
John?
Here. Need a motion to approve the agenda for the special session.
So moved.
I'll support.
McCombs?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
John?
Aye. And on to FY 2526 budget sessions. We're going to allow Jake to kick off a little bit. He's going to give us a high level synopsis of what we're looking at. And then we will go there, going into budgets with departments. So. And the two today are County Engineer Roads Department and the Sheriff's Department. So. All right, Jake, turn it over to you.
Okay, so first of all, thanks to everybody for getting their stuff in, working with Lindsay and I. It's greatly appreciated. With Excel worksheet, I think Lindsay especially spent a lot of time in that worksheet. So. I know we're doing two kinds of things, but we appreciate everybody working with us on that. We just, it's just a work in progress. And you know, we talk about what we can do better. And then when we're done and we kind of move on, pass it. And then when it's time again, it's like, oh yeah, what were we going to do? So we appreciate that. And everybody getting their stuff in and working with us. And if there's changes, doing that, but just thanks to everybody out there for doing that. So appreciate all the departments on that. So. This is the timeline. I think you guys are, was put together some time ago, which we all appreciate knowing kind of ahead. What's happening? And this just kind of lays out the timeline for the eventual target date of April 30th. So this morning from my, I'm, I'm, I don't, I'm not going to try and get into the weeds on things. If you're going to meet with departments, you'll get to the detail. But what, what we're going to talk about here is just a little bit today is getting to the end game of that April 30th, getting an approved budget to the state and all the steps that need to happen before that. The major things to the state, if you work backwards from the 30th is getting the budget approved. And that requires resolutions in a meeting prior to that and public hearings and notices. And before that is the House File 718 letter and public hearing and all those have to happen sequentially. And so it just keeps pushing those dates from April 30th to now. So that's why, you know, February 3, and we're talking budgets. And I appreciate you condensing this into a week, hopefully, and morning. So, and that, that part's appreciated. And that will hopefully get us down the path to the April 30th target. So this is an example from, provided by the State Department of Management of a timeline to do the things that we just discussed. And all counties in Iowa will be doing this. So the big push now is they moved the final deadline later to April, but with this new mailer that we have to put out. That's why the front end of it is earlier now. Schools have to do the same thing. Cities. Everybody has to get information into me so we can get to the printer for this House File 718 printing. So this is just kind of a potential timeline target to do these projects. So this is the county budget instructions as provided to my office, at least it's public document for the process. And so I only put a couple of pages on here because we want to highlight what we're going to talk about in the next slides. I just wanted you guys to see where, where the reductions or reductions, or the limitations is a better word, are coming from. So on the second hand page there, it'd be on the right hand side is some secondary legislation from House File 718. So the secondary legislation, the part that's in red there talks and is showing if you have valuation taxable valuation growth, what is going to happen to your valuation growth. So the whole tax process starts with valuations. And the assessor's office places assessments. They're working on getting out, they're working very hard right now to get out the 1125 valuations and start that process. That, what they're working on now and have to have out by March, I think it is, starts the whole process for what we'll be talking about in a year from now. And it's the, the valuations. Then people can look at those and go through their, their protest process or whatever they want to do. Eventually this fall, we will get, the state will tell us our rollbacks unless something doesn't radically change in the legislature. And then we will take the valuations that the assessor's office are working right now, apply the rollbacks to get our taxable value. So when we talk about a levy times taxable value, that's what we're getting to. What changed two years ago, this is the second year we're having this, limitations on our growth. It's part of the legislators' property tax limitation projects that they've been working on. So historically, if a city, county, school had valuation growth, you could take, you could access all of the valuation growth and take that times your levy. So if your maximum levy for our general fund was 350 and we had a 10% valuation growth, you could take all that valuation at the 350 and that would be our growth. It is all taxes. We can never forget that it is all taxes. But we would take that valuation times our levy and, and we can move forward if you wanted to, or a board or a council or a school board could reduce their levy if they wanted to. The county has four main levies that we apply to this taxable value. But what in essence, the property tax limitation thing did was they couldn't, they, the legislation didn't necessarily, they, they affected the limitation. They couldn't really do anything with the values because of that process. So they did it through the levy process. So if a county or city or school has a growth of that taxable valuation greater than 3%, they reduce the levy amount. So what's in red there is kind of showing the percentages of where if you landed within those percentages, how you would be reduced or not reduced. Is that kind of just a big picture? All right. So I just wanted to show you where that was coming from. And they did tweak it this year. They had some people that were right on the fringes of some of the percentages. So the part in red is the tweak that they did this year. And said that the, the second bullet down for us is non-TIF taxable value growth over 2.75, but less than 4%. Less than 4% is kind of key. 1% factors applied. So that's the kind of the range that we're in. The other difference that, that we'll all see in our homes when we get, get to that point, when we have to send out this House File 718 letter here in a month or so. Last year, if you go on down towards the bottom, it says residential 100,000 current and 110 for budget year and commercial 300,000. Last year, everything, the project, everything in that letter was based off a $300,000 calculation. So your home and your business all looked the same. So the state has changed that to try and make that House File 718 look a little bit more representative. So. That's just big picture stuff, not anything you guys have to deal with today. So we'll, we'll take care of that in our, in our, our process in our office. When we have to do that letter. This is just a, so this is a big project that our office works on, has to be to the state by December 31. This is the taxable values that we will be using for the, it's the 1124 values for the 2526 taxes. So this is just a information sheet I highlighted. This is the numbers that we will be accessing for you guys to set your levies for the next year's tax round. You can see the cities, schools are all on here. We all use this. This populates into our budget systems and this is the values that we use to move forward. So. That makes sense? All right. So this is just a snap of the top of the, of our budget. Version one. So whenever I talk about budget at this point, it's version one. You guys might make changes.
Is this in our book at all?
Uh.
Just your PowerPoint?
This is maybe not in your book.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to be able to kind of see.
Yeah.
Sometimes we can always.
Can't see.
It's okay.
I don't think I put it in the state ones, I guess. So effectively what this is doing, this calculates for us. This is, so the top line of, the top portion of this is for the general fund. So GB is general basic, I guess. So it's got last year's levy amount of 343, 137. The max amount of dollars we could access last year for our general fund, the values. And then what it does is it's comparing to this year's values. It's not showing that that was on the prior page. But our taxable growth was rounded, rounded to 4.00%. So what it does then is it automatically makes your maximum general fund levy for this coming 26 year, $3.39, 3.39740. So without going through, I guess technically you still can go higher than that, but you have to go through quite a bit of public hearings and notice and things like that.
So they've limited the maximum growth.
They limit, they, they limit the maximum growth. So if you go across, that's exactly right, Steve. The maximum dollars you guys can access, you guys. When I say you guys, the county, the county can access for the general fund is 6,985,315. So that's the maximum general fund property tax dollars that the county can access this year.
So can I step in here real quick?
Mm-hmm.
Because we had a department head meeting in December and I met with all the department heads and we went over the sheet. And so I want the department heads that are online to pay attention to see that growth between the six, 6 millions, 6.7 to 6.9. That's all the growth we have. Again, it's roughly, and for the general fund, $200,000. That's where I get that number. When we talk about $200,000, we are limited. We've had that number for several years now.
Pretty consistent. We're, we're, I, I always say it.
We're blessed that we grew.
Marion County is blessed. We are, we are blessed with growth. We're not going backwards. There's some counties that are really, you know.
But you could imagine if that was that rate at 350, how much more growth we would have.
Yeah, that's kind of their, the limitation tack. So if we were still at 350 times our value, that, that, that's what the legislation was trying, is trying to do. It's trying to limit the growth. And yes, this is just tax dollars. This doesn't, this isn't anything with miscellaneous receipts or anything like that. It's not fees we're charging or anything like that. This is pure tax dollars.
I don't know.
This is something we can count on for sure.
Yes.
And making sure that, yeah, that's what.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is a question for you or not, Jim, but what was the reasoning behind it?
A property tax limitation. They, they're, they're just trying to address for property tax. Yep. For businesses and then it moved to rental. It's, it's, it's to the limit. What we all have, what as citizens, as, as landowners and business owners that we have to pay.
Yeah, I just sold it out.
It's supposed to be for, it, it is right now currently for three years, correct?
It was a four year.
It was a four year, okay.
The bill, the, yeah, it was a four year plan. And if they don't make any adjustments to it, if, if nothing changes or they don't add, after four years, the maximum levy will go back to 350 for the general fund. I, I don't know if anybody actually expects that, but.
I do not expect that.
Right. Yeah. So the valuation growth goes down to 2.97. So our allowable usage of growth is the 2.97%. So that's the 1% reduction. So they do it through the levy instead of the valuations. And this includes, yeah, tax credits and all those things are to get to that big number there. So that number, so when I start with your budget, and so you guys can see projected fund balances, I always start with last, with either what's a maximum allowed. So this budget and the fund balances, cash flows you guys have in your book, that is using a $3.39740 levy. If you guys reduce that or go above it, going above it does take, they're really limited that. We'll adjust. We'll adjust the revenues down, right? But that, so your version one budget has this levy in it at the allowable taxable valuation. Okay. So you can see what the reduction is there, or the limitation is a better word. So they've limited our growth down to the 3%, which is I think what their targets are. And we're, and we're lucky to, we're, it's, I'm glad we could get at that.
Yeah, I'm glad that we do have, we have growth in our county. It's just a reminder that as rising costs, that, you know, when you're looking at your general fund, that's why, that's why I caution is because, you know, when you only have that growth, we had that, we had the $200,000 last year, $200,000 this year. And when you're eating all that up and salaries very quickly, it's going to eat away at your reserves.
Okay, so the bottom half of that page is the same principle. This is for the, it says RB there. I'm used to thinking of it as rural fund. They, RB is rural basic. This is Fund 11. This is one of your four levying funds that you guys can let, you guys, the county can levy for. Historically, that max has been 395 and the maximum, I guess, is still 395. And we were at that 395 last year. Same process won't take, slow you down on that, but last year's amounts with this year's taxable valuation, there was a 3.62% growth on that right hand side there. So that, that because of the limitation was reduced down to a 2.6% growth. So the levy actually is 3.91089 this year. This is what we call Fund 11 or rural fund. And the maximum amount of dollars are the 3.7 million. Again, just as a quick overview, the general fund, you can use it for effectively anything. This fund has limitations. It is a levy that is only placed on the people that live or the, or businesses that are in the townships. So outside of our nine incorporated cities. So this is like I live in a city or in, in a town, I pay that, the city's levies, the people that live in Lake Prairie Township around it, don't. They pay this amount and I don't pay this. Okay. So this is a, this is Fund 11 for the townships. Again, you guys can, I guess you can technically go above it through the public hearings and all those things. You could go lower. When you go lower, we get into the weeds with some requirements to fund the secondary or the road department. Historically, Marion County has always been at the max amount of that and also transferred as much as possible to fund the road department as well. But your version one here has the 3.91 on it. All right. So if you want to make an adjustment, we can do that. You'll just have to let me know. Takes a little bit to, to get through that process, but we can, we can do it if you guys do want to go less than that. So you can see what the limitation has done there to 391. And moving forward, what, what happens as long as there's more than a 3% growth, this is our new max. So like this 391 is effectively what our old 395 was. So next year it'll be based off of this. If there's, if we're, if there's further growth. I don't know, next year. Right now at the, in our, on second floor, we're dealing with multiple years. We, the assessor's office is working 1125 for 2627. We're doing year budgeting for 2526, treasures collecting 2425. And last week we had auditors in our office for 2324. So I always have to think about what year we're in. But next year, you'll be getting at the 391 is what the basis for this will be. And it is for the assessors where I was going with this. I think it's a total revalue year, I think. So, you know, I don't know what trends are going to be doing for up or down as a whole, but we may see a decent jump one way or the other. So, okay, does that help set that?
Yep.
Sorry, and Jim, I just kind of assumed you.
Yep. I'm tracking with you.
Okay. So this is just a snapshot, a summary, historical. It's kind of fun to see or funds, probably not the right word, but just kind of see what the county has done over the years with the four. We used to have five levies. We used to have, well, we used to have more than that actually. We used to have.
Thank you. Thank you.
We used to have the, a mental health levy. We no longer have that. We used to have a rural supplemental for many years that was used for benefits for the road department. But, and we don't have that anymore. So we're down to, we only have four levy, levies that, that we deal with. You can see on the far left in the red, that's your version one. So the 3, 3.97 is there. The general supplemental, the second one down at 2.00107. I always start the new budget year with last year's levy. This is the one levy that you guys don't have a limitation on, or you can move it up or down however you want to do without public hearing or anything like that. So we always just need a starting point. So I start with the year, the year prior. This general supplemental does, is a limited use fund. The main, the main things that come out of this are benefits, benefits and insurances, elections. There's more, but it does have limited uses. So you can't just use the general fund or the general supplemental fund to buy, to build a building. Maybe something like that, right? To buy rock. That's, that's not where this comes from. So we do have, when something comes out of the general supplemental fund, you do have limitations on how it can be used. On down to the debt service fund, this levy is different than last year. You can see, I think I put, I think I put a slide in there to kind of show the debt service fund I worked through. And this is what, this is my recommendation to you guys, what I think the debt service fund should be to make sure that we cover our principal and interest. The county has three debt issuances. This is the, this money in this fund can only be used for debt, to, to pay back debt. Okay. So we have three. We have the bonds that were sold for the Prairie Ridge project in Pella. We have the bonds that were sold for the VA demolition project in Knoxville. And we have the bonds that were sold for the Atkins project in Pleasantville. So those are the three principal and interest payments that we have to make. We make interest once a year. Well, we pay interest twice a year and principal once a year. So those are pretty big numbers. So we have the debt schedules that are pretty straightforward on what we owe for principal and interest. And then the, the variable that is happening now, and, and some of it is good, is if we're getting any money back to help us pay that debt. So the Prairie Ridge project in Pella is in a tax increment finance district and there is now monies coming back to us to help. So we project how much we think is going to come back from that, take out the LMI and we reduce what we need to levy on our tax, the taxpayers for that amount. So I don't know the exact number in my head, but I think, I think there's about $190,000 or something projected to come back from that tax increment finance district for that, to lower the, the debt service. Um, in Knoxville, there isn't any TIF money coming back yet for the VA. That'll probably start next year. It's always such a lag because of the 11 valuations. So Knoxville didn't certify any debt on that yet because they didn't. There wasn't any valuation growth and you don't want to start the clock, the 10 year window. But there is, this, that, this levy is reduced quite a bit due to the grant that was received. So I think Carlo worked hard and some people here in the county went out and got a million dollar grant for, to help pay for the demolition of that. So last year, that million dollar grant took care of the entire debt service for that year for this project. And this year it's taking care of most of it. So without that grant, this levy will increase quite a bit. So I would expect next year's levy needs to be quite a bit higher to cover that, to cover that debt.
Yeah, that's the language which our lobbies get changed. So we were able to qualify and to apply for the grant. So the million dollars has helped.
Maybe you can get a few more of those?
That'd be nice, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it was an $11 million issue. And so, I mean, it's quite a bit higher principal and interest than like, what's in like the, the, excuse me, the Pleasantville one.
Yeah.
So I just want you to recognize that in this instance, and there is also, we did receive some money for any lot sales that happened at the VA. Knoxville sends us that money. They, they do a reconciliation once a year. So if any of the land is sold out there, that comes back to us, that would help reduce, helps reduce this. This levy and the grant has taken care of it basically for two years. So just FYI, next year, this, this will probably be a higher number initially unless something else changes in between.
What's the lifespan of that debt?
I believe that that one is a 10 year. I think. Actually, it's longer than that. It's longer than that, Jim. Yeah, it might be. I, I just don't, I don't have it and I didn't turn my, but we can sure get that right away. I can show you that schedule right away.
But with, with Prairie Ridge being pretty much built out, I'm thinking hopefully that will be nice to get that paid down with.
Yeah, I think as long as, as long as the, as long as the market stays, or as long as the valuations stay, and you know, we don't have any major changes, then that, that should become a pretty consistent number. They're actually still, they were still building and you know, this is 1124, which is a year ago. So I mean, houses have come up and stuff. So there has been some valuation growth. So. Variables of, if this legislature this year does anything with rollbacks and all different things, but in theory, we should, we should have a pretty consistent number coming back that will help reduce that. And, and it, and it's working. So. So that 16 cents. So you can see that's up about six cents from last year. Last year, obviously, like, like I said, the grant took care of the whole VA debt. So that helped. So a little bit of reduction on general. General supplemental is the same in your version one and debt services up six cents. Then we go down. So you can see total county wide in version one is a $5.56 rounded levy that everybody in the county will be placed on their tax statements. At whatever the taxable value is, valuation is on their property. Then you go down to the rural services and as we talked earlier, that's now $3.91.09, I guess. So that would be only in the, in the rural area. So it comes to a total levy in your version one of $9.47 effectively. Which is, you can see is one cent less than last year's amount. For a levy purpose. Okay. This is just that, this is just the page that I cut, cut and paste our reductions down. This is the page one, or the, it's called the tax page from the department management. This is the state budget that we have to get to. Ultimately, all the details of every department, we know, we go down all the way to each line item, $50, $100, all that detail. That's all that flows into these, these reports that we have to, are the final budgets that we approve. This is just information to show you the taxable valuation times the levy equals the tax dollars. And this is the same thing, just in the solutions report. So just a little bit cleaner to see. This is the actual debt from our, this is actually from the department management software. But this kind of shows the principal and interest that are due for each project this year. And then the amount paid by other funds is our estimate. Hopefully we're close. Because you, we, we have to make the principal and interest payments. We do have a, a small fund balance in the debt service fund, but this needs to be pretty close. And Michaela's helped me and has been good on keeping track of balances as well for me on these extra stuff when stuff comes in. So. This is what I think we get from outside money. So you can see there's that 159, I think I said 190 earlier. So 159 from Prairie Ridge. The demolition, the VA one is 600,000 outside revenue this year. And that's the second part or the, used up all of the remaining demolition grants and then any lot sales that they've sent us. And then nothing's coming in from the Atkins project yet in Pleasantville. And they have not issued, they have not certified debt yet. So they have not started that clock. Think they've got a ways to go on that yet. So I just wanted to show you that. This is a one page summary of the entire budget. So this is revenues of the top half. I'm not going to go through each of these lines, but, but what I just was wanted to show you and like those detailed pages of the hundreds or whatever, however many pages of departmental budgets there are, this is what is so critical for us as departments. When we're doing chart of account numbers, we're putting that number on our, when we're turning in claims and we have to put these numbers like 01,000, 09,000, you know, a series of numbers, 425, 02 or whatever. That is all critical. Those numbers are critical because those all flow to these reports. So each one of those numbers has a significance. So I just wanted to try and emphasize to the departments, when you're turning in claims to this department, to my department or miscellaneous receipts to Kristen and Michaela down in the treasurer's office, those numbers are vitally important. So think about what they are. If it's a, you know, if it's a each, each of, each area has its own purpose. So when you're seeing that in your budget, it flows all the way through. So that's, that's the basic level detail all the way up to this summary report. So you can kind of see what's projected here. Sometimes it's kind of shocking to see from actual 24 to budget 26. A lot of times there's, well, there's always a reason and there's always things going on. And with accounting, with governmental accounting, sometimes we have to. And, uh, with accounting, uh, with governmental accounting, sometimes we have to, um. Put in, you know, we have some estimates of projects that we don't know what's, where they're going to land and things like that. So, uh, a lot of times there's actually cash, like, let's say ARPA money that came in. We had the money. You only got the money in one year, but you had to show three million dollars expense or one million dollars expense in prior years without revenue. So that kind of, that can make that balance look a little, little goofy. Um, in your books, you have a single page, um, breakdown of what each of all of our funds is changing up or down. And most of those have cash in the bank. The main funds that you need to worry about are the ones that are your levying for effectively. If, if that makes sense. But this is the one-page snapshot. Um, it breaks down, I think the next pages are, um. Go to the next page ones. This is the revenue, so half of that prior page, this is the more detailed breakdown, and you can kind of see the start of some of those chart of accounts. But, um, this is a more detailed, this is a revenue page, so everything on this page is revenue. And when you turn, when departments turn in, uh, money to the treasurer's office to do a miscellaneous receipt. Those numbers, depending on what number you put, that's where it slots it into this report. And then this is starting the expense side. So we have, uh, eight service areas is what we called, so you can kind of see most of this one is, um. Like, the top is law enforcement, oh-one thousands. Um, and it just goes on down. Each department has, um. Like, I'm in the eight thousand and nine thousand. That's, that's my service area for my department. Um, this is all driven by the state chart of accounts, and it's a, chart of accounts is, um, that book. And those instructions are available on department management website, and that's what we go to when we have to set up new numbers or try and put pieces together is state chart of accounts. Yeah, so this is a lot of, uh, health, and so, um. And so, yeah, um, there are some certain areas, uh, that, on an expense side, you need to budget for. Let's say, um, I gotta use an example, but, uh. Courthouse Security Fund has money in it. Let's say it has a hundred thousand dollars in it, and you're only going to take in ten thousand this year. But to be able to spend it, then you need to budget a hundred and ten. That, right, without an amendment, if you want to. If you don't want to spend it all, then you wouldn't have to budget that much. But just in theory, you have to have cash in the bank, and you have to have budget, and it has to be appropriated. So that all three of those things have to be in place to actually expense it out. So, I mean, you can go on through, um, you'll, you, I don't know what departments, if you're going to talk to everybody or not, but each department's budget. On those individual items flow through this. And this is mostly road department. Um, the road department, Tyler will talk about it in his transfer, that's why I'm not going to get into it, but, um. That fund eleven that we talked about earlier in the road department, he's going to talk about what that limitation, I'm assuming, in your PowerPoint it was. How that affected his potential transfer and, um, what we pay, or what the county funds for the road department, so. You can just go on through if you want. Then this is kind of a summary, um, so the middle of this is a summary of all the expenses. And then the bottom breaks down into fund balances. Every fund that we have, so we have a lot more funds than this. So there may be a, um. Uh, we, uh, treasurer's office has to track multiple different funds, but like column A has multiple funds in it. We say it's like, it's a general basic fund or a supplemental fund. So, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of different funds within this picture. So your levy funds and all other budgetary funds as well. So I just wanted to give you a big picture. This is the end target. This is where we need to be. I'm supposed to always say, once a year, if you just want to say we're done, we can be done.
Right.
But, um, this is where we need to be by, um. Early April at the latest, and really, really by the end of this month, because we have the mailing that needs squatted in March. And that, the mailing in March, um, has to be the maximum amount of dollars that you, the county is going to levy for. It doesn't have to have all these necessary expenses, but it has to have the maximum dollar amount you're going to ask for. Later, when you approve your budget, you can be less than that, but you can't be higher. Right? And so the cities have to do that, and the schools have to do that as well. In, in my opinion, let's just get it done, and then we'll move forward. Questions?
When do you want to, do you want to look at cash flow reports later?
Again, I just, it's up to you, um, if you want to look at that now, we can.
Look at that real quick, and then we'll.
Can you go to the P drive? So if you want to scroll, I don't, I always say it the wrong way, but to the top or, there you go. So this has, you know, I just add a year each year and remove the oldest year. This has been around for a long time. So this is the version one, general fund.
Screen, roll down just a little bit.
Basic cash flow. We have, so you can kind of, you can see actuals from oh-seven, oh-eight, all the way through of, um. And then the bottom is what is being projected for twenty-four, twenty-five. One caveat to that is the projection for twenty-four, twenty-five, the fun, ending fund balance has been adjusted. Because, because we know now what the June thirty, twenty-four fund balance was. When we did the twenty-four, twenty-five balance, we were in twenty-three, twenty-four, so we didn't know. So the actual two hundred and forty-four thousand dollar negative, I think was higher, would have been higher when we actually did the budget. But now we know, so I do true that up to try and help, help you guys project out what, what it's going to be. I, I mean, I just, I don't know why I wouldn't do that, I guess, but, um. So, in this year, we're projected, if, and this is assuming on our budget process, our budget software is assuming. One hundred percent utilization of their expense budget amount, so if I budgeted a hundred dollars for paper, I spent all a hundred. Um, it's projecting a hundred percent of the expenses and a hundred percent of revenues. So if I said I was going to have a special election and I was going to take in thirty-five thousand, it's expecting that thirty-five thousand. That's the one I usually hope it doesn't happen, and we don't get it, but, but, um, so I just want you to know.
This is a budget, obviously.
It's a budget, and these are projections.
But this is, this is the number that when I've spoke with department heads, this is the kind of concern that I, I have to think about. I have to think about, um, and we as a board need to think about. The, the limited growth, um, to fund one, and the continual rise in expenses. Whether that's just your daily expenses or that salaries. Um, ultimately, it's going to continue to eat away at our reserve. So, that's just, unless we have offset some huge growth of some sort. Um, and that's where it's kind of difficult, because we don't offer, um. We don't have a utility company. We don't have, I mean, we, we are funded by, you know, the county, mainly by county tax dollars. We have a little bit of revenue, but those are only certain departments that can have a little bit of revenue. So, always things to please keep in mind that. This is why I, I say what I do when I said, like, I, I had mentioned in the department head meeting, where I come up with, um, three percent salary. I felt like I, we could, we could handle that. That's still more than what our growth is. Even if we have eleven million dollars, roughly eleven million dollars in salaries today, we're still exceeding the expense line. And, uh, and our two hundred thousand dollars at three percent, right? You know, we're going to continue to eat it. I'm not trying to do it as, as saying, you know, um, upsetting anybody. That's not, that's not my goal. My goal is, is I want to make sure that we stay sound. And, uh, that we don't have problems down the road, and then we're really faced, uh, with obstacles, so.
Jake, would it be possible for the, like, the last few years to just put in what the budgeted decrease in cash, increase or decrease in cash flow was for each?
Yeah, I think so, if.
That way I can, you can look at and see if we're optimistic or pessimistic as budgeters over the last few years.
I think so. If you want to try it now, um, I do have the worksheet, but, um.
We don't need to take time.
Okay, I have tabs. Yep.
Uh, that would just be interesting to me to say.
I'll send that to you.
Better than we planned for, or are we worse?
Right. Generally, generally, it's been better, because we don't utilize, well, we don't utilize all of our expense. I mean, and tax dollars are pretty solid to come in. Um, but, you know, some of us, our estimated revenues don't come in either on our miscellaneous receipt. So, yeah, I have some tabs here, and I, you should, we should be able to share that, absolutely.
Awesome, thank you.
Jake, can I interject something?
Yeah, it's not, it's not to me. I always like it when Tyler.
So I, so, Jim, to your point, I, two years ago, I did the kind of a trend analysis on where. Fund one, fund two, fund eleven were as far as. You know, Jake, and I do it too, you know, we assume a hundred percent utilization, but yeah, I want to know where we're trending. You know, is it five percent, hundred and five percent of the reven, budgeted revenue, or, or ninety percent of the expenses? So this, again, two-year-old data, so actuals through FY twenty-one, twenty-two. The five-year average for fund one revenue was about a half a percent above, so a hundred point five percent. For revenue, and we were about ninety point two-five percent utilization of the budgeted expense, five-year average. And ten-year average was ninety point nine-three, so really similar. So tip, you know, ten-year average is ninety percent, or ninety-one percent utilization of the budget expense from fund one. Similarly, fund two, we were at. One point six, ten-year average, and two point six above the budgeted revenue. And we were at eighty-five and eighty-seven percent on the budgeted expense. Uh, utilization of the budgeted expense, so. Just, just for your information. And I'll talk about that a little bit more.
Thank you, Tyler.
Tyler's very good with numbers, yeah. Appreciate that, Tyler. Jake, and then just, yeah, fund two.
So we rolled forward to fund two. It's a little darker numbers. Um, as we can see, uh, this, and like we talked earlier, fund two is, um, specific use only. It, it can't be used for all purposes, and it's mainly insurances and benef, employee benefits, insurances, um. Uh, things like that, elections. So, a little bit darker numbers, um, you know, this is also. Uh, we had a very nice, healthy, because it has a limited use, there was a, there was a fund balance, um, a few years ago. And so I think, uh, it was a, it was a corporate decision by the board to reduce, um, try and give some tax breakback and reduce this levy. So this is FY, um, uh, uh, the twenty-five year is the second year. Is it? I gotta look. If you scroll down just a little bit more, Emily. Thank you.
I think I can tell you on the levy.
Uh, the first year, we, the reduction was in twenty-three, twenty-four, so the year, current year that we're in is the second year. Uh, if you look on the bottom, at the two point zero zero one seven, so there was, there was somewhat of an intentional, um. Reduction of the levy, um, or excuse me, well, of the levy, yes, and of the balance, just because it has limited purposes. And, um, to, to assist in the tax reduction. Um, but again, now, now you have to look at trend and see what you're going to do with that.
Yeah, and so, board, just something for you to think about, um, local option sales tax, we have, um. In that, in that fund, we have to give fifty percent property tax relief with that. And in the past, um, this past budget cycle, we give fifty percent just to general fund. Um, which is a nice, um, amount, that, because if we're rounded to, what, one point six? Um, so you would think, you know, eight hundred thousand of that would go, uh, to the general fund. We may want to consider, um, looking at giving some to, uh, fund general supplemental. Um, and seeing what we can do, um, there. But we are getting, uh, a little tight, I feel like, but I don't know how much we want to go in raising the levy. Yeah, so, you know, in fund, going back to that local option sales tax, uh, amount, that eight hundred thousand went into the general fund. As, you know, so that was a revenue as, you know, that was transferred into that. So that makes our, you know, even though we were showing a loss, but that, that has helped us be able to help fund a junction ninety-two, those projects. Um, but I think it is something, in the past, we have done, uh, a split more, um, with that other fifty percent. Whether we wanted to do thirty percent to general fund, twenty percent to fund two. Um, just something to be thinking about, and hopefully maybe later this week, we can, we can discuss, so. Okay. All things to.
So those are your big, those are the, those are the big, yeah, and this is probably the most alarming, or this is probably one of the most concerning numbers you have in your budget. Right? So, just, I mean, that you'll want to think about at least. And if you scroll down, um, there's a few more pages here if you want. Fund ten, was the old mental health fund. We don't have that anymore, and it's just, it's just a worksheet that's in there. You can keep going, Emily, if you want. So this is the rural services fund that we talked about earlier, the fund eleven. So, I mean, there is, you need, I mean, you need to think about this a little bit too. It still has a projected positive ending fund balance. Uh, this is the one that is, um. The levy, the maximum levy you can have is the three point nine one. And, uh, it has a very, it has a limited use as well. This fund eleven that is, um, for townships only is the main, one of the main, or it's the, the main. Funding source to the road department, other than fund two for benefits. Um, but the main uses of this are secondary road transfer. Tyler will talk about that. And, um. Uh, it takes care of some uniform patrol services, a portion of their salary, portion of uniform patrol services, a number of officers for that. Uh, zoning department, um, townships, I think we talked about this here today, levy, uh, libraries, I believe. And, uh. Humane Society, I think, comes out of that. So anything that's kind of service-oriented towards the township people more. So, again, um, it's a trend here that you need to kind of look at is. Um, not a huge deficit, but fund balance trend. Again, we, we always ask the same question too, or the same question is always asked, what is a necessary fund balance? And that's a question that just each board has to decide for you. I, I don't have, there's no code that says you have to have twenty-five percent of expenses, fifty percent, and you, you know, one tax cycle without. There is no, it is what the board is comfortable with, or, or can, or can manage. So, um, that's something that you guys will have to decide, what is a comfort level? Or maybe do a budget that isn't exactly comfort level, I'm, I'm not sure, but that, there is nothing that says you have, that. That requires a certain amount of fund balance in any of these funds, other than enough cash to pay your, to pay the bills that you say you're going to pay.
Tyler?
And, I mean, this has been pretty solvent, and the fund balance has stayed around a million, but unlike the other funds, one and two that we talked about. My analysis shows ninety-nine pers, and a half percent utilization of the expense on the ten-year average. Quite a difference compared to those other funds.
Yeah, and, and that is a.
Same with revenue.
And that's a byproduct, it's a limited use, and those uses are, I mean, it's used, I mean, that's. Uh, rural suppl, supplemental is what we had for the, uh, for many years. Um, we paid the road department's FICA and IFRS out of that, um, and we moved that to the general supplemental some time ago.
Yeah, the debt levy, yeah, okay.
Debt levy is next. So, um, again, this is one of those instances, if you keep scrolling just a little bit more, Emily, thank you. Oh, yeah, you can go a little bit further if you want. So you can kind of see, this is, this, um, those red numbers, uh, are because. We're using that grant money and these outside, uh, so it comes in in one year, but then you expense over a couple, so it looks like it's a. Um, a negative, um. So that's why those numbers are. so that's why those numbers are, are negative. And you know, we, we really don't want much of a fund balance here at all cause it's just the debt service each year, principal and interest is what we put on our, our levy. You don't wanna be or asking for more. Can you just run it?
First responder, I'm recording.
Yeah, I think he just ran. So.
Uh Jake, this uh would be the last one, which would be Fund Twenty.
Oh yeah, that's Tyler. He'll talk to you all about that next.
Okay, alright. We'll just leave that.
He can make, those numbers can look scary, but he has a plan, trust me.
Okay.
Any other questions? Or anything else you wanted to see or?
I don't have anything at this point. I'm sure there'll be more questions, but.
Absolutely. Jim, this is the first time for the binder. And welcome back. Hope you had a good week. But um always available if you have a question, just reach out.
I'm sure I will.
I mean, we just kinda get.
You will be on speed.
We just, we just kinda do the same thing as what we've always done there. Um so just, I know you'll ask if you need something. Is that okay?
Yep, and then so Tyler left, I had to step out for a minute.
Step out for a second.
Yeah.
Coffee break.
Yep, let's take a, let's take a, take a five-minute break. Let's come back and, let's do.
He'll be back in a second.
Are you sure?
You do what you wanna do.
Let's just take a break till ten o'clock and we'll start, restart back at, at ten o'clock, okay?
Did I talk for fifty minutes?
Uh entertain a motion to go to a break. Yes.
I move, we take a break for till ten o'clock.
Take a minute on that, ten o'clock break. We'll entertain a motion to reconvene.
I'll move.
Second. Neeler.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Yeah, just.
It's kind of bossy, isn't it?
May I, may I?
I always need to do this too. Sorry to interrupt Tyler, but I do not have a PowerPoint for my budget, my departmental budget, just FYI. Tyler, Tyler always goes first and makes, and everybody else look bad.
So Tyler.
Not the goal.
You have about an hour.
Oh, we completely understand.
Okay, alright.
No, whatever you want.
Well, just so we make sure we give time for the sheriff, so you know.
Okay, so um I don't know what one-page Jim's looking at, but exactly, but um just some highlights on our secondary road budget. Um you know, the county budget, we, we operate in two two sets of accounting codes at the road department. We, the county is really simply to present it to you. Uh the, our day-to-day operations operate in the DOT's accounting code series. Um so when I'm putting my budget together, we're, we're operating through the account, or the Iowa DOT's system and accounting code series, and ultimately I just transfer it into the, the counties and to move forward. And then later, you know, once the county budget is approved, maybe there's some discrepancies there in the Iowa code currently that they're trying to fix in the legislators about the deadlines. We may have to approve the DOT budget prior to the county being certified. Hopefully that's not the case. I'm guessing Jake wants the county one done sooner, but we'll see. So the county budget for the road department includes ninety-seven line items for expense, thirty-three line items for revenue. However, on the DOT side, I'm operating with three hundred and forty-five expense line items and seventeen revenue. So a very complicated budget. My presentation will show you a snippet or the high level, the thirty thousand foot level of most of that. Be happy to talk in detail on any part of it that you wish. So this year, our budget and revenue is slightly inflated. So when you look at our overall numbers, the bottom line of each, they're gonna look a little bit higher because we have some pass-through expenses that were cash flowing for some federal aid projects and some grant projects. So both revenue and expense are inflated by one point six two five million. And with the, with the total revenue shown there and total expense. House File Seven Eighteen, uh we, Jake mentioned this earlier, does have an impact this year on the rural, on Fund Eleven, on the Rural Services Basic Levy, and ultimately to be safe, we, that did impact the secondary road fund transfer from Fund Eleven. So in my discussions with Iowa DOT Local Systems and the County Engineers Association, we could budget for secondary roads, the max amount, even though the levy was reduced because the calculation for secondary roads, it's kind, there's kind of some unclear things uh that they're trying to shore up because of the recent legislation. You know, what, what impact is it? So the max transfer is calculated based off the valuation, yet the transfer is off of the taxable collection. So we went with the collection to be safe, which resulted in a one percent reduction in the transfer from Fund Eleven to Fund Twenty. Um I'll, I'll talk about what, how, the, what dollar impact that is later. Um expenses, so we did have a reduction from forty-one, an intentional and planned reduction from forty-one full-time to thirty-eight full-time employees. That's actually down from forty-three eleven years ago when I started as county engineer, uh full-time employees. We did add one part-time employee to kind of supplement um in times of need throughout the entire year uh because of that full-time reduction. And ultimately, that nets a, at least a one percent reduction in our overall wage budget. It could be more, and I'll talk about that later. Um the budget expense is heavy on uh maintenance construction, particularly with uh seal coat projects. We had one last year, we'll have one this year, then we won't have another for three years, if that's the trend we continue with. Overall, there's a net negative impact to our fund balance, so this is the Fund Twenty fund balance. Um again, planned, we knew that was coming. Um I have a fund balance projection, you'll see at the end of my presentation. We typically know where we're going, and as Jake alluded to with the county budget, you know, sometimes you'll see the uh you know, a big reduction in the fund balance, but in reality, the net change of the actual fund balance isn't as much because we have unrealized expenses in one, in the current year versus, and then you're budgeting maybe that same expense in the future year. Alright, Emily, that didn't go. Okay. So our revenue, uh I'm gonna go through this fairly quickly. Jim, feel free to follow up if you have future questions. I really put this in there for you. I think the other two have seen this throughout the years. Um a large part of the secondary road budget re, revenue comes from uh road use tax. So approximately sixty-plus percent, varies on the year of our revenue is from road use tax. Out of the total state collections of road use tax, second, or secondary road departments throughout the state get twenty-four and a half percent. And then that's divided up amongst the counties based off a weighted formula of road miles, number of bridges, number of dirt roads, gravel roads, et cetera. So uh our estimated revenue from that source is five point one five million for this year. And in your, in the, what I sent you, there should be a link, actually that may not have worked because I printed it to a PDF, I'm sorry about that, of how funding flows through the state and ultimately to counties. Um I'll provide that for your information. The other major piece of our revenue is property tax revenue coming from Rural Services Basic, like we just discussed, two point eight million roughly. Um the max transfer could be slightly more that counties are allowed to transfer to secondary roads. However, historically, Marion County has not transferred funds from the general fund. I think the last time we did that was two thousand fifteen or sixteen, and it only began a few years prior to that. So I think maybe in thirteen, there was a general fund transfer of a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand to secondary road fund. And then in twenty sixteen, when the ten cent fuel tax increase came in and boosted our revenues by six hundred thousand dollars, or roughly ten percent, then uh the board at that time removed that general fund transfer to the secondary road fund. So technically, the max transfer the county can make in the secondary roads is the combination of the general services max there and, and uh the rural services. So you know, three point one million would be the max transfer. There is a statutory minimum also. So again, seventy-five percent of that combination is a statutory minimum. This year, we're at ninety-nine percent of that allowable transfer or eighty-eight percent of the max allowed. Some counties are getting into trouble because that eighty-eight percent for them is maybe seventy-four percent. So then now they're under that seventy-five percent minimum because of big reductions in House File Seven Eighteen impacting their county. We're not there yet.
That's very convoluted. I'm just gonna say.
Yeah.
And let alone for you, I mean, all the different funding sources and to be able to keep it even straight is, is, it's a lot.
Yeah, and just to be clear, this is just operating budget revenue. Later in the month or in March, we'll talk about our projects and, and all the project funding. Uh so other funding alternatives. So these, those were some statutory requirements on the previous slide. Other things, uh as Jake alluded to earlier, FICA, IFRS, health insurance for secondary roads is paid out of Fund Two currently. And what, you know, prior to that was Fund Two and Twelve. That is a big impact for us. If Fund Two was to become, to go away, uh you know, that's a million-dollar hit to the secondary roads operating budget that we would then have to absorb in that transfer from Fund Eleven. Other options, so.
Can I ask a question real quick? Is it all FICA, IFRS and health? Everything comes out of O Two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Not just roads. I just wanna.
Yeah, um.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
And that is a county-wide levy. And so.
I assumed as much, but I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, I think prior, prior to all road department, FICA, IFRS and health coming out of Fund Two, health was paid out of Fund Twelve, which was that rural supplemental.
It's FICA and IFRS.
Uh, uh, other way around, okay. Uh so the, the county can fund road department activities in other ways. So the transfers and the statutory requirements on the previous slide, um using Fund Two is one of those ways, but also, let's say, Ju- Junction Ninety-two, for example, we've used the general fund, we've used ARPA, we've used uh lost. We, for road projects, we can do that as well. And here, basically, the, the board would allocate funds and pay them directly from those funds. Then it doesn't calculate into the statutory requirements of a transfer. Once funds are transferred into the secondary road fund, then they can no longer be used for any other county purpose, and we maintain our own fund balance once transfers. This is a breakdown of the revenue distribution, a little bit skewed this year because of the project reimbursement. That's the orange piece of the pie there. Uh that's that one point six million I was just discussing earlier. Um so again, you can see road use tax is a huge part of our revenue with rural basic transfer being the second largest. Um typically, without the projects, we're at sixty-two percent road use tax and thirty-four percent property tax for our revenue breakdown. Expenses, this is a breakdown of where the bulk of our um expenses go. Little bit skewed this year ju, just due to some project things that we have going on uh internally and some administrative things. But uh usually what I, I like to point out is that roads is our biggest piece of the pie. Obviously, we have to have wages to support what we do on the roads. Um and, and you know, I do believe that even with the reduction in full-time employees, we can continue to, to do that at a high level of service. We are also, I'll talk about this later, but new equipment is a, one of the largest new equipment budgets we've ever had this year also.
And when you say reduction for, it's just that you didn't backfill. Those, those, some of those had retired.
Retired, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And thank you for being, thinking outside the box there and uh seeing, you know, what you can do to save.
Yeah, you know, I did not take that decision lightly. I told my staff the same thing. You know, along with a reduction to keep our wage line item low, we've also reduced our operating budget. Had we maintained status quo and just absorbed inflation, we've reduced our budget by almost one point five million over the last two or three years also. In ex, in other expenses outside of wages, you know, just, just to keep uh things afloat here. This is just a, a different look at the expense breakdown um with wages from uh in those particular line items versus in its own category. Alright, I'll run through these fairly quickly. At any point, please stop me if you have questions. Uh this is one of the areas that we, we typically have been trending down on. One thing that I've been proud of is, you know, my staff has been able to find ways to do things more efficiently. I mean, anything from our, you know, leasing versus purchase of copiers to formats and uniforms for the mechanics and whatnot. We've been able to reduce this budget historically. Uh we're gonna see some jumps. Like, you know, a couple of years ago, you see a jump to purchase the copier. We're gonna have some of that this year. That's because of the planned new engineer's office at the new junction facility. Uh we've got furniture and equipment uh that we'll be shuffling around. We'll be using what we have for the new mechanic offices, sign technician to upgrade theirs and then ultimately replacing ours uh in the office. Uh software just continues to grow, um twelve percent increase, that's really I'm, we, we've looked for other options, you know, talking about our CAD software and other things that we utilize. There's really not much we can do there that, you know, we've, we've explored other options, but uh you know, in order to put plan sets together and submit them to the DOT, there's only, there's limited options available for us. And you can see there's some large upcoming expenses in future years, so this trend will be kind of cyclical in a couple of years. Engineering is kind of the same way, you know, we, we had trended down um we have, and this is largely project-based also. Um you can see we had an engineering study a few years ago. We will have a few bridge proj, fairly large bridge projects, not flagler bridge style, but uh fairly large projects coming up where we'll have to do soil borings. We're working with Jasper County on a couple of projects. We'll be doing the soil borings and initial engineering for that. And we'll be looking at some uh additional survey equipment to keep our crews off of T fifteen while surveying that corridor if we get that grant. So again, th- there are some kind of speculative expenses here that will be based off that. Uh bridges and culverts, this is one of those areas where we've been reducing expenses over the years. So basically we had kind of a, our crews do a certain amount of work that we budget here, and then we had contractor work. So what we couldn't obtain or what, we couldn't, what we didn't have the capacity for with our own crews, we would hire maybe a local contractor to do this bridge approach or this pile driving or whatnot to repair a bridge or culvert. Um we, we've just basically taken those expenses out uh to kind of uh maintain status quo in other areas throughout the year, throughout the years. So that's the reduction here. Also, we've had to shift some things around based on some changes with uh language in the Iowa code versus, for construction versus maintenance and, and clarifying that. That's kind of getting into the weeds. This is uh one of our largest line items or besides wages, which would be roads. So this is the bulk of what we do. You saw that it was the biggest piece of that pie in our expense distribution. Um this is where we budget for any local road projects and all of our road maintenance activities. So the rock that we put on the road, the culverts that we replace, the driveways, the uh concrete patching, um any, any local project, if we go do an overlay on a local road where local funding is available, this is where it comes out of. Uh so not a huge, I mean, if you think about all of that, eight hundred and fifty miles of road and what we're doing out there, you know, three point one million is not a huge number for that. And, and that's the struggle, you know, we've, we've had to reduce the tonnage of maintenance rock to make the budget work here over the last couple of years. So you can see those numbers, sorry, go ahead, Keesha.
Well, and when you're saying maintenance rock, I mean, do you feel like less service, or do you feel like you're able to continue with, I mean, decent service? Are you just maintaining it a little bit differently? Are you?
We're just doing it a little bit differently. Some of the reduction in tonnage has been um kind of contingency where we had a road that maybe kind of needs, needed sweetened up one year. We would put two or three times the rock on it, you know, all that went away. We're back to our baseline only. Other areas we've reduced would be the roads that we've stabilized. We've been able to cut that kind of that perpetual rock, annual rock that we put on those roads. We're cutting that tonnage out of the budget. And then we looked at a few other areas uh where we could maybe shift tonnage. And then we looked at a few other areas, uh, where we could maybe shift tonnage slightly. So we have a. Four categories of road. They each get a planned tonnage of X number of tons per mile based off traffic volume, traffic type, soils, whole gamut of things. Um, so we've just, you know, wholesale cutting back tonnage in one category has major implications. You know, millions, half a million dollars in one category and would be detrimental possibly to certain roads. So we're not wholesale changing anything yet. But we're just looking at certain roads and where we can dial back, et cetera.
Do we have a rating system that we go through and we look at what's the status of each one of the roads that we're maintaining and? So we can plan for either upgrades or maintenance, or, or is it just really a matter of? Okay, these guys are washed out. Now I need to go fix it.
Some of both. So we have a pavement management system for the paved roads. On gravel roads, um, you know, it, it's based, kind of an experience-based analysis. We do know. So we have a, maintain a database of rock. All types of rock placed on every road segment. So we know, okay, that. X road has received what we call repair rock. So the maintenance rock is, we're placing X number of tons per mile per year. Based off its category and classification. Those are then adjusted based off experience. But then repair rock is anything above and beyond that. So we can look and say, well, eh, Road X has received. Historically, a hundred ton to the mile of repair rock. What's the problem here? Then we go out and evaluate that. And that, that's really how we get to base stabilizations, road regrades, ditching projects. And, you know, how can we be more sustainable in that particular road segment and, and plan other maintenance around that? Did that answer your question, Jim? Uh, so I'm not gonna go through those numbers. You can, you can see the numbers or, or feel free to follow up if you have, have things there. I will touch on the last one. Um, because of the email I received here, sitting here this morning, uh, is pertinent. So we, we made a conscious shift, um. I think in twenty twenty, we implemented a new rock specification, gradation and specification to try to get better quality rock out on the roads. Um, after years of trying, uh, to do something cumulatively with other counties. Uh, I think since twenty sixteen or seventeen, you know, we just kind of went ahead and did it on our own. Because of that, we made a sh- a conscious decision to, to shift, uh, where we were getting rock for a lot of the roads. And then ultimately all the roads. And, uh, through that, I, I hadn't really evaluated that shift because it was kind of staggered tiered over the last three or four fiscal years. Uh, this year I did the evaluation. So when we shifted to basically a hundred percent purchase from Martin Marietta, we have fifty-two thousand dollars in savings. It does cost us, um. A little bit more to haul that rock, but this net is still thirteen thousand in savings. I will say there are new owners that we're evaluating the quality of the rock they're putting out. Uh, we did get the pricing. It is. Out of the gate higher than what Martin Marietta has. So, but we'll, we'll reevaluate based off that price and haul distances and whatnot. But I just received that this morning. So, uh, because roads is our biggest, I'll spend a little bit of time on this, uh. You know, roadstone still went up five percent. That's down from the eight and a half percent three-year average increase. Uh, you know, almost ten percent on clean rock. That's the repair rock that we use, Jim. Uh, you know, so we want to use as little of that as possible because it costs more and typically it inflates more. So we're, we're definitely trying to be more sustainable and get away from that. And, and one of those things. That we evaluated in twenty twenty was what gradation is working the best for us. Uh, you know, I did a lot of research and analysis on that, and we ended up with a different gradation. Just the rock we're placing is different. And I believe it is more sustainable. Everything I researched and everything we're seeing in person, uh, lead me to believe that. So we did, we do have a reduction in concrete crew patching because. We've done so much over the last few years. We've had a lot of projects of large corridors get overlaid. Uh, we're gonna shift our focus to some other maintenance tactics that we really need to do. Uh, that being crack sealing and some joint main- maintenance on roads and bridges. And some of that will be crew work and some of that will be contractor work. We will continue, uh, over i- in this next fiscal year at least to, to do four to five miles of. Base stabilization. So, so the highest volume roads that we have. Are the ones that we typically spend the most maintenance rock budget on and the most repair rock budget on. You know, upwards of twenty-two thousand dollars a mile per year. Uh, rock, just rocking the road. That's not trucking it. That's not blading it, et cetera. So. There is a rate of return there, a payoff period and a break even point that we are, we now analyze on every particular road segment. What we do base stabilization on and, uh, you know, we have, we don't have the longevity yet. To prove this out ourselves, but based off the research we've done with, uh, adjacent counties, similar counties. Particular Wa- Washington, Clark, Jasper, uh, you know, we believe this is a worthwhile endeavor and ultimately it's reducing that maintenance rock budget as well. Which continues to inflate at a higher rate than typical consumer inflation, which is historic with all construction typically. So, regrades and base stabilizations, uh, continue here. Hang on a second, let me get this for Emily. Snow and ice, uh, this one is always cyc- cyclical because it depends on the, the, the year. Um, this year we are. We have to take a certain percentage of the salt that we contract and we are stuffing it in this week. I mean, we're out of room. So we're gonna. We won't buy any preseason. So really the budget you see here is. Probably not going to be realized as an expense, most likely unless next year is just absolutely awful. Um, you know, we definitely won't take any preseason because it, unless February, March are awful, I guess. Uh, but. Salt price has been pretty cyc- cyclical. We lost our rail port in Reynolds. Um, where, where salt was delivered from Kansas via rail and that price went up five to six dollars a ton immediately. That, that's back open. Uh, we hope it remains open. There are a few issues there. I think that they're working through.
It's back open?
Yeah, it is back open. So, and we, we did see the decrease, you know, once the, instead of trucking it from Kansas, they're bringing it in our rail. And then we, it is contract, contracted to truck to our sheds via the Central Iowa Salt Group. So all we do as far as contracting. And bidding is all done through the Central Iowa Salt Group, which is a conglomerate of cities and counties in central Iowa. West Des Moines administers that, and they actually have a reserve there as well. If, you know, if things got really bad. Fortunately, uh, in the early two thousands when Junction Ninety-two was built. It nearly doubled our salt capacity. Um, we will maintain a similar capacity. As we consolidate facilities there because we want to be situated to. Not, to, to never be in that situation where we run out of salt because it, it's, we've been close. Um, since I've been here and we've been close a number of times or out, uh, prior to that. Traffic controls. So this would be pavement marking, signs, um, lighting, things like that. Anything that regulates. The movement of traffic or aids in the movement of traffic. Uh, this year you're seeing a big spike there. This is one of the areas where we're receiving a grant. I, I spoke to you earlier about those grants in a previous board meeting, uh, one being that the destination and intersection lighting at. And I did get clarification on that. Four. Intersections were laid out in the award. They said if we have additional funds, we could do one more and they specified which one of the thirteen that we had proposed that is. And then T sit flashing beacons. I think I spoke about the, that and those are for particular intersections. And then the sign replacement program for cities and counties. We have not been awarded one of these for three or four years because. They eliminated the program for a couple of years. Because they wanted to revamp the program and spread the wealth. Unfortunately, Marion County was one of those counties that applied every single year and was awarded every single year. And I think we were one of the problem child, children, you know, that, that led to that. They wanted to distrib- distribute the funds more evenly across. The state. Last year we attempted to apply, but we were not awarded, um. Those that were awarded last year will not be. Eligible in this upcoming year and we will go forward with, uh, application again this year. That's anywhere from up, up to ten thousand dollars. Of signs that we're already replacing. Pavement markings, radical inflation over the last few years, um, nearly double. I went back and looked twenty twenty. I think it was twenty nineteen, we did the same center line that we're doing this year and it was fifty-five thousand dollars and I had a hundred and ten thousand dollars budgeted. And we received bids on that, um, I think this week. New equipment, uh, as you can see, it's one of the highest we've ever had. Um, that is planned. I have a fifteen-year equipment replacement plan where we analyze. And I did a lot of work on this five to eight years ago when we looked at how, how do we want our equipment fleet to look in the future? What, what do we want to do as far as repair and replacement? The end goal of that was we were looking at a buyback program on motor graders and turning the fleet over more frequently. You know, when we got to the end of that five-year buyback period, it didn't make as much sense as it did five years prior due to a variety of factors. We extended the warranties on those machines. So that is, that is the caveat here. We're still maintaining as much warranty on equipment as we can. Because the price of parts is just astronomical. Um, you know, when we went under warranty, we were able to reduce our equipment budget substantially, our equipment parts budget substantially. And we've been able to maintain that up until this year. Um, I finally had to. You know, even with all the inflation we've had the last few years, I, I finally had to increase our budget from like twenty seventeen or something like that. So you can see there the five-year inflation, sixty percent increase in truck costs, uh, that'd be your dump truck, plow truck. Uh, forty-five percent in motor graders, that, that's substantial. That's, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars per machine, hundred plus thousand dollars per machine. And. In that same timeframe, we have had a combined revenue increase of about twenty-five percent in that five-year period. In the fifteen-year equipment replacement program, we need to average around a million dollars. Uh, that, that's factoring in trade. Um, you know, and trade is factored in when we do a lifecycle cost analysis on motor graders and trucks, that's factored in. And when I plan the fifteen-year equipment replacement budget and every annual budget, we're looking at. What, what trade values are or when does it make sense for trucks, motor graders, uh, et cetera to replace? When do they start losing their value? What does the use market look like? Um, and then that's when we made the decision earlier to go from a five-year buyback. Program with a guaranteed trade to purchasing additional warranty and keeping these motor graders for ten years. We used to keep them fifteen to twenty years. And, you know, repair costs were just astronomical, um, and, and the annual cost of ownership did not make sense when we compared that to. Keeping them for a shorter lifespan and keeping them under warranty. I skipped one. Can you go back for me, Emily? The, so. Equipment operations, um, fuel's actually been fairly stagnant the last couple of years. It hasn't fluctuated too much. We don't really know. I mean, there's projections of a slight decrease. Um, when we look at the, what was it, US Department of Energy's website or whatever, uh, for, for crude. And right now we're not really seeing, actually, we saw some increases since December, I think was the low. That we saw that the, the suppliers send us, uh, daily. Typically, around Valentine's Day is, is kind of been the magic date of when to contract fuel. Lately, that hasn't been the case, but I'd say over the ten years, eleven years I've been here, that's usually when we're looking pretty hard at contracting any fuel. Right now, we are under contract through the end of June. I have no, as far as this budget, we have no fuel contracted. Uh, at times I'm contracted out eighteen months, uh, you know, when things are really good and we were getting diesel for a dollar sixty a gallon, we were contracted out eighteen months. Uh, right now we're around two eighty-five, two sixty-seven, depending on the month with diesel and gas. Actually, gas is contracted right about the same as diesel. Uh, this equipment operations budget includes the parts that I talked about. So there's some slight increases there. And we are considering some technology changes. A lot of that will. How much time do we have once we move in to really evaluate how that's gonna work and whether we want to do that? So there's a budget there. I just don't, I can't say for sure that will be realized in this fiscal year. Um, it comes with some efficiency gains. So would I like to guess? We just don't know that that will happen.
Do on, on our fuel, do we work together as county? Um, even though I know yours comes differently and, but I mean, are we looking at that and what?
We've discussed it. I don't know that we've ever done that. I don't.
He, we've looked at it. We, a lot of times we used to.
I mean, the short answer is no. Right now, no. I mean, we did the fuel, was it? A year and a half ago, we did, like Jason and I presented.
During COVID, I remember, yeah, we did so.
Yeah, when we're dealing with the different things, putting it out to bid, a lot of times I'm asking, what does, what's Tyler getting it for? You know, when we're trying to get those bids. We're just, we're a little bit lower in contract, but I mean, by a few cents. I think when, would you say you were like two sixty-five or something for gas? I think we're, we're like two sixty to two sixty-three. So those, those vendors know to try to keep it pretty comparable because they know we're gonna ask. Where that's at. Um.
Do you guys, when you guys do, uh, you like your, I'm assuming for tanks? Then do you guys also have it where you're going to the stations and doing it too?
Road department, no.
Our, ours is only on emergency situations. I mean, if they're down in Melter, you know, and they're running on calls and everything and they, it doesn't make sense to drive back. But very, very seldom do we go to a station anymore.
So you're using your tank.
We're using those tanks. Yep. Ever since you guys, we did that COVID money, we put in those new tanks. I'm guessing ninety-eight percent probably of our fuel.
I'm not sure. I've contracted fuel since he got his tanks, honestly. Our contracts we're under now are fairly long-standing.
W- we've been contracting and like Tyler said, it, it's hard on right now the gamble. I actually, I mean, added a little bit to my fuel expenses this year. Um, because our numbers historically, you know, it kind of varies on amount of miles you're driving and everything else. But I added about thirty grand to my fuel just because of the turmoil of not knowing. I'm hoping that obviously will come in less than that, but that's that, that hard part. But to answer your question, I mean, when the new shop or something is built. On the Junction Ninety-two, that might be a real good time to say, hey, where are we at?
I mean, I think we should be communicating on that anyways, just for cost saving.
I would think you'd want to negotiate those prices together and say, you know what, we're gonna do one county contract for all the fuel, whether it's sheriff, department, or road and use. Put it all together and take a bigger swipe at this.
One of the hard things is that when you look at tank fuel, so when you look at semi-tank, when you're contracting that side of it. I mean, it's a different price and a better price than off-the-truck prices when they come or different things and even on that contract. But. Yeah, we can look at it, especially when, you know, with the new building and stuff that are there. But we do, uh, Mike McMurray out there, we're calling all the time trying to say, hey. Where are we at or where are you at on, on that side? So.
I think when we, and when we made that presentation a few years ago, when we were discussing with the vendors, because of the sheriff's department tank and our tank is so close. We could take a tanker load. At both locations and split the load to get the cheaper delivery rate versus them taking the straight truck load. And, but we, that's just never come to fruition because we haven't, we don't.
We don't have Junction Ninety-two yet.
How soon will that come online that you can be able to do that?
This summer sometime, hopefully, hopefully June.
At the end of this contract?
Yeah, and then that's another reason we're a little bit hesitant. To contracting, you know, we don't want to have a bunch of fuel sitting in a shop where we vacated. So. Yeah, we will have some, I mean, some substantial savings and that was in that presentation from a year and a half ago. We'll eliminate the cost of maintaining and inspecting underground storage tanks. I mean, that's about fifteen thousand dollars a year and. It's a few hundred for above-ground tanks. And then be, having the ability to take a semi-load versus a straight truck load is ten, seven cents on the gallon savings right, right away. So I had quantified what those savings are when we go to Junction Ninety-two. I don't know those off the top of my head.
Tyler, do you know on your average, uh, gas, not the diesel side, but on gas, you know how much you budget like in a year normally?
On gas?
Yeah.
Sixty-four thousand.
Okay, we're at about a hundred and thirty thousand on gas. So their diesel side of it, I mean.
Yeah, like three hundred and some thousand on.
Yeah, and yeah, their diesel's gonna be a lot larger. Our gas is gonna be larger just because of obviously.
You still have tanks for both, right?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, so if I'm a fuel provider, whether I ship you a tanker load of gas or diesel, it doesn't matter to me. I want the deal in total.
Right.
So and then that's all I'm suggesting is, let's really look at that and say, okay, I don't care if you're delivering a tanker to the sheriff's department. Or a road you, or the road department. or a road you, or the road department, let's get it done together so that as a county, we're leveraging that buy business to the vendors.
Yep.
And I think that's exactly where you're going.
Yep. We do that with LP across the various departments. My department bids out LP. Uh, Chris and I, I haven't, I don't know if I've talked to Jason about this, have talked about, uh, sanitation. Do we bid that out cumulatively across the county?
I think the mindset, I, I, again, I'm, I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit removed. Clearly I'm the new guy, but I mean, from my mindset is, is we need to start looking at all these contracts as a countywide. I don't care which department it is. I don't care who uses it. Let's just make sure that we're bidding those contracts out and utilizing our purchasing power countywide. So that we're driving those prices down as far as we possibly can.
One, just quick addition to that, we have looked at that and we're, we are continuing to look at that. The hard part is like when our budget years, you know, when we're planning this now, like Tyler said, February is normally that lower period to do that. So I mean, obviously right now we're in that process of doing that bidding. So come July one, for the lower prices, you're usually coming after January sometime to, to try to balance that side too. So. Yep, we can definitely look at it more.
Uh, not much to say here. Uh, we've shifted some budget around, no significant changes however, uh, culverts is the largest part of this budget. So the, the actual purchase of the materials, the culvert that we keep in yard stock for, you know, when something gets washed out and we need to replace what are typical sizes, this is where, uh, this is the budget that is coming out of. And lastly here, as far as road department budget, uh, expenses, the secondary road shop or excuse me, junction ninety-two shop, what this was inflating this budget, as you can see over the last couple of years. The road department's contribution to the project is planned to be over by the end of June in this current fiscal year. So the budget you're seeing here, um, would be to do some modifications. Uh, long overdue modifications to the Franklin shop and to the Bussy shop. Uh, basically to accommodate the consolidation that we're having at junction, we're shifting a few things around everywhere to best, uh, serve the public. And, and to do that, we have to make some minor changes. Nothing, uh, nothing super expensive, but we're just maintaining a couple hundred thousand dollars to do that. Construction, yeah, sorry, I did have one more. Construction, this is where the bulk of the contractor work. So things that aren't maintenance, but what, what's considered by Iowa code, new construction. Next one. There you go. So, uh, wh- what we go out for bid for, for seal coating, for bridges, et cetera, that's where um, projects are budgeted out of our local budget in this construction line item. And in this, we have to cash flow that federal aid bridge replacement project because it's on a local classification of road. So that's the big increase you see here and you can see that's happened in the past. And we do plan in our five year construction plan, these local dollars, uh, right alongside our farm and market and federal aid bridge project, which I'll be presenting here in the next month or two. We talked about wages a little bit earlier. So with the reduction in full-time employees, you, do you see a slight reduction there? Um, this budget does include, so the numbers you're seeing here does include ten percent, well, the was budgeted for health insurance, uh, increase. So I'll just go to the next slide. So the fund two, so this is FICA IPRs health insurance, uh, my budget show is showing five point four percent increase. Um, if we were to reduce from that ten percent budgeted number to one point nine four that Lisa sent out, then we would realize forty-five percent for secondary road department employees only. Or probably a hundred and fifty thousand roughly for all county departments. Fund twenty itself, so we saw about a one percent decrease in our wage budget. So taking out those, the fringe benefits and et cetera, twenty percent reduction overall. However, that budget still includes those last three bullet points there. Which retiree payouts, we have to budget for that. So this is your comp time, your vacation that retirees choose to take or not. Some, some do, some don't. But we still budget for that because we're typically not sure what they're going to do and they're typically not sure until they really see the numbers from Lisa. Also, we have thirty thousand dollars budgeted. Uh, do not believe this will be realized necessarily. Uh, this is something that we will talk about as we make, make, maybe make changes. There's nothing formal here to restructuring our department due to that reduction in staffing. We have to restructure long, long term. What that, what does that look like? We're not exactly sure. Because we've reduced full-time staff, because we're gonna consolidate, we're gonna reevaluate that later in the year or possibly next year. I went ahead and budgeted some of that for this year. It may or may not be realized. Also, there's a couple of incentive programs we're considering there for certain trainings and classifications we've done. Like, for example, we do ten cents for anyone that, that has and maintains their pesticide applicator license. There's some options there that I'd like to consider in the future. Nothing formal, but the budget does include that at this time. Nothing formal at this time. Also, this has been maintained for now the fourth year, forty-two thousand, uh, which is basically taking our overtime budget, adding twenty-four hours of overtime for a employee incentive program that I presented in the past. I would like to revisit that. Um, so again, this fourth year that that's been budgeted, third, you know, it's been unrealized expense in the last few years. So overall, um, you know, we in, or we're projecting to end the current fiscal year, uh, higher than what we budgeted. So at two point five, almost two point six million. And as I stated at the beginning, the net negative decrease is about one point three million, which results in about one point two million dollar secondary road fund balance at the end of FY twenty-six. That might change a little bit, uh, because late last week I learned Jasper County had to bump one of the projects that we were planning to do together. You know, they had a lot of flood damage last year that we didn't, uh, you know, so that fund balance may change slightly because of that. Actually, we have a couple of projects in the next couple of fiscal years with them, which might shift things slightly. Yeah, so why does that say FY twenty-three? I'm gonna say FY twenty-four, or excuse me, twenty-six. Wow, I'm way off. Uh, revenue will be likely closer to the budgeted, um, and higher utilization of expenses, just based off the type, we have a lot of project work. You know, once those projects are done, we typically spend that money, unlike our day-to-day operations where we don't have that high utilization or hot, you know, with projects, we typically spend ninety-five to a hundred percent versus ninety to ninety-three percent. Does that make sense? Uh, so just some quick numbers, uh, that, that you don't have to understand this, it's just showing you, this is how I project the fund balance forward. Uh, you know, you can understand that. I'm saying, I'm saying that you won't get it. You don't need to digest it all in the moment here, is what I'm saying.
It's not gonna be a quiz at the end.
Yeah. This is just us looking forward. And when I talked earlier about fund one and fund two and the percentage of utilization. You know, when you were talking about overall budget, this is what I'm doing for secondary roads and those funds factor in when we look at if we can't afford things in fund twenty, how do we fund them? And if fund two isn't solvent, that million dollar impact could be detrimental to the road department potentially. You know, so I, those are things I want to know. I'm not looking at fund one and two particularly here. This is fund twenty only. Uh, but.
But if you're not solvent, then somewhere along the line, those expenses could come back to us as a board saying, how are we going to pay those? And we would pay those.
Yeah, or there will be significant reductions in other areas to accommodate that within the secondary road budget. Graphically, this is what that looks like. So that spreadsheet translates to this, orange being, that's the direction we're headed if we spend a hundred percent and get a hundred percent of the revenue. The blue line to the top line would be best case scenario is we maintain trends. We get more revenue than what we budget and we use less budget than we, or expense than we budget. Purple is kind of where I'm at in reality and how I look at my budget projection moving forward. So I know what projects we have in the five-year program. I know where our equipment's going in the next five years. I know where I'd like the department to be in all the different aspects and the purple is the, is the reality that I'm working in of what projects are going to affect a fiscal year, two years from now and how that makes the road department's budget and fund balance look. Our goal is between the red and the green. We don't necessarily, this is my take, we don't necessarily want to drop between a million dollars. Jake alluded to it earlier, fund balances are a discussion and, and everybody views it differently. I think a, a equitable amount is between a million and a million and a half in the secondary road fund. Historically, if we've had a flood event, we've been between six hundred thousand and a million dollars of immediate expense to, to get the bulk of the roads reopened in a timely manner. Do we have other options in those situations? Yes, it was in one of the slides of other revenue options. We could look at the general fund to get roads reopened potentially. Would we get FEMA money back? Maybe, maybe not, depending on if it was a declarative event or not. But that, that's why we maintain some, some amount of fund balance and, and we, I'm, we happy to have that discussion. But I'm typically in that million to million and a half range. This is my trend analysis for secondary road fund, same thing I did earlier. What our utilization is, it's skewed drastically because of junction ninety-two, you know, throw an extra million dollars at a project, last couple fiscal years, these numbers are skewed. But historically, here's where we've been. We're typically operating at ninety to ninety-three percent of the budgeted expense. And we're typically utilizing or realizing more revenue than what we budget, um, in the range of five to seven percent some years. I don't know if I was under an hour, sorry. Any questions?
Tyler, I do. Uh, so overall, your employees, what are you looking at for salary?
Oh, didn't even state that. Three percent.
Three percent, okay.
Three percent was budgeted.
Yep. Seal coating, you, um, have, you know, significant increase on that. Do you feel, is there some, and you may have went over this, but the seal coating is gonna be up.
Yeah. So seal, because of some inflation problems and making budgets work over the last couple of fiscal years, we already the life of seal code is three to four years. We already delayed from the last cycle to the fourth year. So what we did, what we did last summer and what we're planning to do this coming summer and in this budget is the fourth year, so we do not want to delay that any longer for seal code. Moving forward, we need to reevaluate seal codes. It's becoming increasingly more expensive. There are other options, typically more expensive, but let's look at the lifecycle cost analysis. Look out forty years. Does this make sense anymore?
Okay, alright. Um, so on your dust application, obviously you're significantly up on that and.
Dust application?
Yep. Um, it says other erosion control desk application. Was that because of road stabilization? It's like two hundred and four, two hundred and forty-three thousand and you got three thousand dollars.
That's, that's probably stabilization. My budget stabilization, granular stabilization is a separate line item. So I'm guessing that is for that, yes.
Do you feel like so far the weather, um, that we've been blessed with so far, that that has been significant cost, uh, whether it's comp time, uh?
So you're talking about winter, winter operations?
I mean, we obviously, we have the rest of February.
So the budget you saw up there for snow and ice is one percent of our total operating budget. In total, with budgeted overtime, you know, snow related equipment, you know, only snow related equipment expenses and, and wages. Snow and ice removal is only five percent on average of our total budget. So does a light winter help our budget? Yeah. Is it super impactful? No.
Okay. Um, overall, your expenditures, just looking at that between eleven point five to twelve point five, do you feel the biggest expenditure is to do with junction?
Uh, no, junction is not in this budget.
Alright, so what do you feel when I'm looking at this just total? Like, cause I thought you were spending down some of your own money out of that.
In the current fiscal year, in the last fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five. Yeah, there, there's no planned expense for junction ninety-two with the exception of the furniture I mentioned for the office. Uh, but no, no capital project budget for junction ninety-two in our secondary road fund. Now, in the general fund for FY twenty-six, yes.
Alright.
So, so that big increase you're seeing, what was it?
Eight point, yeah, 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 eight point seven five, yeah. Percent?
Yeah, a lot of that's gonna be project based. If you're just looking at the expense line.
That's what I just needed to know, overall.
So we had close to one point six million in kind of cash flowing, but then also half a million dollars in seal code. Plus some local bridge and culvert projects as well. The seal code, again, not gonna happen every year.
Okay, so project based, okay. Thank you, um.
And I did clarify, Keisha, the stabilized granular in dust pallet to is all, is in the same county line item.
Okay, alright, thank you. We do see that you have some, you know, obviously uptick for some selling, uh, selling of fixed assets, which I get that.
Yeah, so one of theirs is actually happened this year. So, so we're keeping that truck until this fall. We're anticipating a large fixed asset sale of multiple pickups, multiple dump trucks, other missed lanes to equipment post move to junction. And typically, historically of late, we've been utilizing an online auction, uh, process for that. And been highly, in my opinion, very successful at utilizing them.
So obviously, yeah, synopsis, three percent and the largest increase is because of project base.
Yes.
Court, I don't have any further questions. I don't know if you do, Tyler.
You got it?
So your, that projected revenue, Tyler, that's the sale of maybe the Pella and shop, is that included in there?
It is not. The sale of our facilities would be, uh, general fund.
Okay. Alright.
That is not anticipated anywhere in the budget. Yeah, no, that's fine.
It, it, uh, in, in all reality, it's not going to be substantial.
Unfortunately, yeah.
I mean, a few hundred thousand dollars. Could be more.
Is there a listing somewhere of disposable assets that we're looking at that we can liquidate at some future date? That we will, with this transition, that we can subsequently offload?
Yes, well, I do have a list of some properties. He has some lists of properties, but we have to wait until, sorry, should speak a little closer. Um, until we get moved into junction, um, and yeah, so, but then there is, um, others that I have some property that I'm still doing some research on and then definitely want to bring up before the board.
In August of twenty twenty-four, so just a few months ago, the board took action to sell one of the secondary facilities in Harvey. The county attorney's office and Brian and my office are currently working on that. You should be seeing that fixed asset sale coming near, in the near future here. We will be offloading two other road department facilities, uh, two, two more of our eleven. So we will go from eleven to eight. Now, we only, we will only have employees housed at six of those, um, in, moving forward.
I do have one additional question if you're finished, Steve.
No, that's all I need.
Um, and I'm gonna ask every department head this exact same question. Uh, so if you're online and listening, be prepared for the question. Everybody's gonna get it. And that is, is do you have any employees that are work from home? Full-time employees work from home?
No.
Then I've got no further questions for you on that.
Thank you.
That, we will move on to sheriff's department.
On break, are you good to go?
Let's go.
Tyler, uh, Tyler obviously does a great job with his presentations, um. Every year it's hard to follow him, but, uh, my, my approach, uh, normally is I just go line by line through the budget. That way it, it's, we kind of, it would hit all of it. I mean, that way if there's any questions on any item where we're at, so if you can pull that up, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Alright, overall, are you on revenue or expense? Which one do you want to do first, uh, Emily? Or which one do you guys want to do first? Or which one do you guys want to do first?
Revenue, that's fine, we can do revenue. So it's towards the back.
Revenue starting?
How come there's less pages of revenue?
Very good question, but uh I I was hoping to save the revenue side of it for the last part because it's uh it's actually the better part of my budget. Um, but it going down through it, uh, overall, you're going to see a increase probably of around a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on revenue on different things. If you go down through um the number one first aspect, um, uh, the contract side of it, law enforcement. If you look at the twenty-five zero one zero five. Yep, on that, um, we did increase that up to about a hundred and twenty-four thousand. What that is, Bussie, Melcher, Selbrite, um, in regards to Selbrite is a system that we use for downloading phones, cellular phones, different things. We have the equipment, we utilize the equipment, but we do celebrate for multiple different law enforcement agencies around the area and stuff, and then we bill them. Part of that cost of us to have that, so that's where you're going to see that celebrate and that increase of uh a little bit there on the twenty-four thousand. The next side of it Knoxville contract, right below it. The Knoxville contract side of it um is for our dispatch services. So in the past, uh, you see the one sixteen five hundred. Knoxville, many years ago, um disbanded their uh PSAP, Public Safety Answering Point is what PSAP stands for. That's what we have uh charged Knoxville to do it. Knoxville's went through some hard budget times over the last few years. Um, that con, we have a contract in place with them, with the city of Knoxville. We've maintained that contract for about the last four to five years at that one sixteen. The contract, if you go by it, I mean, has significantly increased. But they've had some difficult times on different things, um, we've kept that steady. Uh, this year, I just met with Chief Fuller, Chief Wyman, um Heather, the city clerk. Actually, if you look at twenty-four, twenty-five on our number of one sixteen five hundred, we usually send them the bill, Jenny usually sends them that bill, first part of August, September. Obviously, knowing that we have to have an increase, it's hard for everybody, budget numbers are changing. That number actually is going to be one hundred and thirty-five thousand for the twenty-four, twenty-five is what Knoxville is going to be paying for us. And we're going to renegotiate the contract, and that's where you see that budget increase, decrease up to one forty-five. That's just a projected number on probably where that number is going to be. So that's uh that's going to be something we sit down with, go over with them on. Um, technically, by the way, the contract was wrote, we're probably a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety thousand. But in all honesty, I just don't think that's fair. I mean, for the city of Knoxville, so that's why you see that decrease in the renegotiation side of things on that one forty-five. I think that's probably a fair number for them.
Do we, Jason, do you have um regarding Bussie and Knoxville, I mean, do you have like signed contracts with that?
Melcher and Bussie, we have signed contracts with um part, not for dispatch, just for the law enforcement side of it. The Knoxville contract is going to bring up a topic in regards to other towns, um mainly Pleasantville. And the aspect of Pleasantville has a police department, they also have fire and rescue. Uh, Knoxville saying if we're going to pay a hundred and forty-five thousand, why are these other towns not paying? Which is a legitimate question. So at some point, we're going to have to probably all sit down and figure out what is a fair price. I mean, along those lines, I don't have anything projected or budgeted in for revenue for that because we don't, it's an unknown.
So do you, do they, have they agreed to the one thirty-five then for this year?
Yep, yep, that's a great.
The one forty-five could be.
Exactly, yep.
Thank you.
You bet. Um, that you're going to say a significant increase in the core contract. We actually just last week uh got a renewal for our core contract. We provide a deputy um for law enforcement services out for the Corps of Engineers. That contract actually that we just got uh the other day from April first, they're on a different cycle than what we are. But from April first, twenty twenty-five to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, that's going to go up to a hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty cents. So a pretty significant increase in regards to that law enforcement contract and one sixty-four, eight sixty-three.
And why, and why, and why is that, are you adding more?
Federal government, no, it's going to be the same hours on different things, but it's uh the negotiation of those contracts, it's always, they're very appreciative of what we do out there, we're very lucky to have it. I mean, it's it's a win-win for both sides. Our side of it is when we have that deputy, and it's only summer months, I mean, you're looking April to October. But when we have that deputy out there, um, it's a definite benefit from them. They've reduced hours for the Corps Ranger side of things or whatever. We've kind of picked up some of those hours along those lines, so it's a benefit. Uh, we have that deputy that's, imagine around the lake, Lake Red Rock. We don't get up northwest a whole lot, the core actually goes all the way up, Bennington Boxcar is on up into Polk County. But that majority of that deputy's time is east of Highway fourteen and then down below the dam a little bit, down to just south of the lake and then the north side of the lake. So imagine G twenty-eight on down, G forty-four over to T fifteen and up around. But um they're very good about it, we try not to draw that deputy away from that area or whatever, but if it is something, there's an emergency situation, they're understanding of that. One of the other things too, in the contract, it talks about part-time law enforcement versus full-time law enforcement. Every now and then, if uh because of scheduling, vacations, different things, we do have reserves, go out and work. Sometimes that billing amount is less than what a full-time deputy is, so there's a little fluctuation in regards to that, but good news along those lines. The, if you keep on going down to maybe kind of the next significant one, and stop me if if I, if I jump something you want to talk about. I mean, pull me back, but most of the stuff, if you go down to the mental health deputy side of things there, the twenty-five ninety-four zero five five six seven, that's, that budgeted amount is put in in regards to our mental health deputy. That's something there's some uh, and you're going to see another aspect of my budget or coming in here. But right now, um, actually Lieutenant Kai, I hope he's back in the back corner here, um supervises our mental health deputy. When we were going through this process of re-looking at revenue, doing things, pulling numbers together, we came across a discovery that the mental health uh position is not, thanks to Jake's help also on this, but uh the mental health deputy spot has not been paid for for about a year and a half through the mental health regions. Uh, we're going to be sending them a a bill for a hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and three dollars and sixteen cents. Now, when does that come in, when does that not come in um to our budget? Does it, doesn't, or if, will it or will it not? We truly believe it should, but I don't know if that's going to be this fiscal year or next fiscal year. So there's a little, about two hundred thousand dollars fluctuation in regards to that too. Contract's very clear um in regards to what it is, we feel that, I mean, it's something that they owe us. And what it was is a change from the cross mental health region to when it went to Heart of Iowa. So still to, still to be negotiated along those lines, but um that is a a agreed upon revenue aspect that should be coming in that we have not seen.
So a couple of different things on that, um, obviously hopefully checks and balances have now been put in place so that that doesn't happen again. Um, and then what happens if they don't pay it? What are we looking at?
I mean, we've absorbed it.
Right, no, but I'm I'm saying overall though, um, you know, we're with mental health and not knowing where it's going. I mean, you know, that was a position that was created and it was created because I know we were a pilot program is my understanding and we were going to do it for three years or whatever, they had dedicated money towards that. Um, with this change coming July one, um, I mean, is that something you're thinking of, you know, if if there isn't? Are you, you know, if there's a change, I mean, is that person, you know, we can't continue to fund something if we, you know, don't get the revenue.
We, well, it's so, it's something that, I mean, that mental health deputy, uh, obviously Deputy Lancer got deputy of the year this year. But that is a huge thing and and there will be, there will be a huge discussion regards to it. Those of you that don't know or whatever, it switched from the regions, different things to now the state control of it. That's going to take over July first, we're already in discussions on trying to figure out, there's some regions and and you'll see this as as one of my last things I was going to talk about, but we can talk about it now. There's a lot of uh regions that even on the mental health med side of things, and that's the reason I have Lieutenant Kaius here Jeff and Jenny on different sides, where they're refusing to pay for it. The Iowa Sheriff's and Deputies Association are obviously at the table in regards to these discussions. There were certain regions that um maybe had projects that weren't evidence-based that they were funding. To me, one of the benefits of going to the state control side of it is to get a handle on that and not have fourteen different kingdoms of doing things different ways. So we're we're fighting for that aspect of that money to come back. Now, is it a guarantee? No, am I confident that they'll recognize the benefit of, benefits of it? Yes. And so much so, that even based on our program, the city of Knoxville and the city of Pella just uh I have joined into contracts for mental health police officers, I mean, on it, um, so so there's.
The transition, they would fund it, I mean, I'm not just saying, I just thinking something as a board that we.
There's discussions going on about it.
You know, and uh definitely when you're up at the Capitol, that we need to make sure, it just seems like when meeting with Director Garcia last week at ISAC, there's a lot of unknowns when it comes to mental health, and it is kind of scary. Um, but uh first off, we need to get paid, second off, um, to be able to fund.
Sustained, yeah, very, very good point, I mean, in total agreement in regards to that. Um, coming back over on the front page, bring status quo on it, is that?
On your prisoners.
See that one, I put that one thirty-six in regards to on, if you look at the mental health side of it, just jumping back to that. I have one hundred and thirty-six thousand for it, that's just moving forward with reimbursement, that's not the what's owed to us. That's the reimbursement coming up the next fiscal year, just so you know what that dollar amount would be.
Doesn't include the catch-up?
Exactly, correct.
So uh whether it's yourself, Reed, in thirty days, could you please give us an update as a board where we're at on that? I would appreciate that.
Most, and and something too that, I mean, obviously on our previous conversations, we want Jared review that contract and everything along those lines, so that's going to happen this week in regards to getting his views on that too.
Okay, care of prisoners, back up to that line. Um, can you tell us what the difference between twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, obviously looking over to the right? And that's kind of um, it fluctuates, obviously.
If you keep, if you keep on going even back farther on different things, um, one of the those big numbers of different things was before Warren County had a jail. Warren County, yep, it'd be for, if you go way back on different things, um, Warren County was an extreme revenue um generator for us, which we very much appreciated along those lines. Now that they've uh built their own jail and facility over there, they're holding their own prisoners where we used to hold all of them. So that fluctuation on different things is both inmates here in Marion County and then fluctuation from out at county inmates on it. So that that number, there is a lot of fluctuation in regards to that number. I mean, and depends on how many we have, Lieutenant Kai, how many did we just bring in the other day?
Can you hear me now? All right, um, so besides holding for Polk County, we also hold for Wapalo, um, we held for Marshals. Those are usually temporary holds, however, we are reevaluating, redoing the federal contracts, as the sheriff said, especially with the core contract. Um, there are different terms than state contracts with that, uh, and some other options as well.
Uh, Governor's Safety Traffic Bureau, um, it's only about a fifteen hundred dollar difference there from eighteen to twenty thousand. Moving to the next page, if you come over, uh, the twenty thousand staying, the deputy wages. So um Sergeant Van Wyke is actually the supervisor for.
We're on, we're still on revenue, right?
Yep, just go to the twenty-seven forty-one zero five two eight seven. See that one?
Okay, thank you.
Yep, that's twenty thousand stayed the same. Um, seventy thousand on the sheriff's fees would stay in the same, the thirty thousand. There is one, there's actually between the two clerk of, the sheriff's fees and clerk of court. And if you go back to your, well, we'll come to, you don't have to switch all through your pages different now, and actually Jake's out of the room. But one of the questions there was, there is, um, the state court administrators, there was a mess up in regards to the amount of money that should have been coming back to counties in regards to fines and surcharges and different things along those lines. Our association has worked on that. The state court administrator has realized that there was some mistakes in regards to that, so that's where you're going to see that influx of different things that hopefully there's, that was an accounting error on the state side, not anywhere in Marion County, but that's where you're going to see some of that, and and as we go back a few different pages, you're going to see that also back there. Um, we were just talking about clerk of courts, Jake, and that whole getting that uh fiasco fixed through the state side of it, so there's hope that there's going to be more money coming in in regards to that.
Let's talk about the weapons permits, Carrie, you know, obviously, I mean, right now, it's not a significant amount, but you, I mean, you do have twenty thousand, it does that, has that decreased since?
Yep, I'm not down to that one, but uh, or you want me to jump down to it?
Oh, sorry, I thought you were, yeah.
Nope, uh, yeah, weapons, weapon side of it, Jenny on your side, I mean, it's
Yeah.
It's cyclical, I mean.
Uh, weapons permits have significantly decreased. We don't see a lot just because you don't have to have a permit to carry in Iowa. We still strongly urge people when they call in and ask, you know, hey, do I need a weapons permit? And we say, um, you know, we re-recommend you get one, because if you want to purchase a weapon um, or travel to another state that recognizes Iowa's permit to carry, um, then it's good to have on hand, so. But we have seen a significant drop since that law changed.
And it's a five-year permit, so every five years you see a bigger influx in regards to that amount that's there. Um, we're right now, we're at seven thousand three hundred, oops, excuse me. We're at uh four thousand in regards to that, I mean.
It's probably could be a little bit, it could probably be lowered a little bit just because I don't see that you're going to.
Wait, if you want me to drop it down to ten, we can, you want to drop it down to ten? We can do that.
How many states recognize the Iowa permit?
Any idea?
I'm not sure off the top of my head, but most, I think most states that.
The reciprocity is definitely increasing. I mean, it used to be kind of the Utah permit, used to be the one everybody wanted and stuff, but now, now reciprocity, they're starting to, everybody's catching up. But yeah, Jake, if I guess, we're on the revenue side.
Let's just talk about process here just a little bit, so are are you good, you want to make a change?
Like, you want me to make that change right now, or do you want me to circle that key shit and do it down the road?
I suggest we circle and then Jason will give me his final.
All right, I got it circled on mine and we'll go from twenty down to ten on that.
Sorry, if any changes are made, let's just, we're going to do them.
We can play around with it on the worksheets, but yeah, just at some point.
I will, I got it circled and I'll work with Jake to fix that.
Yep, yep.
Yep, um, same, actually, actually, we did on the next one, uh, on the general basic um miscellaneous fees, we could, actually, Keisha, to your point, what you just asked there. We did that, we went from twenty-five thousand down to ten. On that, I'm not sure if that's showing up on yours or not, okay. So that was, we just, we looked at past trends on kind of those numbers, tried to get a more realistic where that is. Um, you're going to see a lot of these that, uh, well, on my sheet, I don't know if you're guys' sheet looks like this or Jake's already done it, but we're taking out a lot of the different ones that were kind of old, we've updated the process, Jake's been very good to work with in regards to trying to update things that we never really utilize anymore, so.
So if it has a line through it on the on the twenty-five, twenty-six, on this, that means he's taking.
But yeah, we're trying to just clean up the system where, hey, we're not using this anymore, nothing's coming in, making that the form better for you guys. Uh, moving back, um, you'll see that eighty-five zero five, that's a violation of the county ordinance side of it. Um, you'll see the thirty, the thirty-one, twenty-three, twenty in past years. That's kind of we've left, uh, does it show anything in regards to yours, a violation of county ordinance or fines?
County, yeah, county violation surcharge.
Yep, does it, but does on the twenty-five, twenty-six, does it show a number for you?
Thousand dollars?
Nope, above that.
Oh, yeah, twenty-five thousand.
Okay, so that's, that's a, that twenty-five thousand is an average of those other ones in past years, that's where that's at. Uh, coming down to fixed assets, you asked a question in regards to Tyler. The fixed asset side of it, we've, we utilize Purple Wave. Um, Tyler's using, I think, the same thing, Purple Wave, we started using it back for when we started to get rid of cars versus trading them in. Definitely saw a definite increase on it, teamed up, different things, so when we have a Purple Wave auction, you'll see some stuff from County Roads, you'll see some of ours, different things, but that's a, um, if you look at past years, seventeen, thirty-six thousand, one year thirteen, we put that at twenty. So projected sales on Purple Wave, that's the number there. Nothing else really major in regards to changes along those lines on the revenue side. Questions in regards to that revenue side? We'll get those new numbers and I'll work with Jake in getting those in there for you.
Do it all, you know.
Uh expense side. Uh starting at the top, are you guys both on the, or all three of you on the expense side of things? I put in a four percent for my employees is the numbers you're looking at. You'll see, I don't know if it shows on yours or not, but it shows a four point seven five versus just four percent. That four point seven five is because of also the comp board recommendations. One of my sergeants is not in that number. So instead of that four, I'm waiting, you know, I gotta determine what you guys do on comp board. But that's why it's that little bit higher number is on the four point seven five versus four, nor it'd be four if he wasn't included in that. But that's why you see that difference. Salaries is obviously our largest part of our expenses at the sheriff's office. Those, as you go down through, you're gonna see that. I mean, historically on different numbers. Um the mental health deputies, right below that, that is just added in to show a full year's budget. Or expense side of that, coming in and coming out, but that's through the mental health region that we talked about. That's at seventy-nine thousand, seven-five-eight. Uh down, if you go um to the part-time side of it, right below the third one down. The reason we decreased that from, if you look at twenty-three, twenty-four, we had a lot of openings, you know, different things at that time. We're utilizing a lot more part-time help, that's kind of stabilized. So we've reduced that number down to five thousand, five twenty-eight versus where it was twenty-three, twenty-four, our budget amount was at fifteen. So keep on going down, same, same, same. Uh fuels, this is, uh if you come to. Two fifty, zero-five, see that one on the line? That has been increased to, does Lindsay actually just changed it this morning? Yep, hundred and thirty, yep, shows. That hundred and thirty is that fluctuation that we talked about in regards to the fuel numbers for the gas side of it. That was there. If you go back, um you can see used ninety-six thousand, ninety-eight thousand, hundred and three thousand.
So I wanna make sure that I'm at the same spot. So now, from this book, you're changing it from a hundred to a hundred and thirty?
Yep, correct. Yep, exactly. And that's that increase. And like we were talking earlier, we've been contracting about two sixty, two sixty-three. Fuel, the goal is that that goes down. I mean, our hope is that that goes down, but I mean, fuel prices are the unknown. Everything that's happening now with, across the world. Uh tasers, if you look at the next one, safety and protective supplies, we've increased that by twenty thousand dollars. On the one right below it, now, uh well, actually it was. Well, it's, it should show a thirty thousand increase on, if you look at this, look at the green up here.
He wanted, so Jason wanted to show you.
I wanted to show you what the changes are truly gonna be. The reason for this, yep, so that green. That you're gonna see on that, that number, we, we're at twenty, we went down to ten. We've just recently found out or whatever that uh, I was hoping we wouldn't have to, but our tasers are. Yeah, our tasers are at that expense where they're starting to go out. That's gonna be a pretty significant expense. That's why you see the, the, up to thirty thousand in regards to increase on that side.
So, alright, okay. So I guess I'm gonna ask this question. Why, why the delay in changing the, changing it just now?
Well, part of it was the spreadsheet was locked, so Lindsay, that's what you saw us doing this morning or whatever in regards to that.
Did these sheets, I'm assuming, and you did them with Jake.
Yeah, yeah, part of, part of that is an increase, talking to my two taser instructors and knowing that end of life of tasers. I mean, so that's one of those that, knowing that amount. But any other questions in regards to that tasers?
Go ahead. Is there any grant availability for uh doing any of those things, so upgrades? I know in the past they have been.
B, BGA, BJA, the Bureau of Justice Assistance and DOJ right now. You might have seen recently where the federal courts have delayed um the freeze on a lot of stuff. That is a big unknown.
Okay.
There's like, there's.
Clearly, we're gonna keep our eye out there.
Yes, yo, yes, mo-most definitely, but there's, the, the grant side of things anymore is, there is a lot of things unfold with grants. Uh same, the increase, you're gonna see investigative equipment, that's that right there, that forty. That side of it um is LPRs, Selbrite.
You change that again?
Yep, anything in green are that, there's three or four, and actually, right now, I know you're really nervous because these show increases. When we get to the back, one of the main reasons that you're, these changes are in there is because you're gonna see a huge savings. That you're gonna be very happy on the backside on why this happens. Um but that's, that's, went from thirty to forty in regards to the LPRs. What you guys may, well, I'll ask you straight up on these questions, on LPR cameras. That, what LPR cameras are license plate reading cameras. There's, I'm not personally a fan of speed cameras. I, I think that if you get a speeding ticket or traffic violation, you should have a right to talk to a deputy. Those LPRs that we have now around the county um have been a huge benefit for us on missing people with Alzheimer's, with. Locating individuals, with wanted individuals, with protective orders, with a lot of different things. So I don't know if you guys have heard much about them or not, but um I, our Facebook page and then also working with the media. We threw out a lot of different uh um public information about that on it. And so you may, you may get asked questions about it, but know there's a difference between a speed camera and an LPR. If you drive to Des Moines right now, anywhere in Des Moines on any metro area, you're gonna see LPRs pretty much about in every.
Kind of wish you'd had it out there when a kid pulled up in front of me.
There you go. Yep, e-exactly. I mean, there's, there are benefits in regards to it, but they're just, just to hit on the LPR side.
So just so we understand first off, for the public to understand, on the LPR, the cameras, those were something that. I'm assuming was a grant type situation or given to us, it put up and then.
Yeah, actually, how it all started or whatever, is US Cellular approached us in regards to trying a program. Um through Genetek is the name of the company. There's Flock, there's Genetek, there's different ones. But gave us a very discounted rate in regards to getting those, the, the cellular plans that go along with it to start with. It was very successful and then we've added to that, so.
So when we see this increase, is this gonna increment, go up every year? Cause I mean, obviously there's a cost.
That's, we built that into that. That's, yep, that is trying to absorb some of those costs and different things that go along with that. So my goal is next year, when I'm from you, that number won't change.
The only thing that I would ask in regarding that is, is I, I did get several emails on that. Obviously, I forward some on to you. Um if that, something were like that to happen, I would appreciate maybe we come before the board or at least tell the board. So that we know that it's coming and so then the public understands a little bit better versus. It was, you know, really delayed response and getting, I mean, I think they'd been up probably six months.
Parts of them had been, yes, but, but the, but the increased number is when we did that media blitz in regards to that. I mean, and that's where, you know, I, I've, as the sheriff, you know, I've had a few calls on it, but the vast majority of the public's been very positive.
Yeah, they understand it, right? Yeah, they just don't understand when you turn the corner and it flashes at night. They're like, what's, what's it flashing? You know what I mean? And, and understandable.
Well, I'll be straight up blunt with you too. Um it kind of defeats the purpose on advertising where cameras are at in regards to investigative skills. If everybody and their brother knows where a camera's at. So part of the delay.
Are obviously noticing, yeah, yeah.
I mean. But anyway, that, yep, so Selbrite along those lines, if you keep going down, same, same. The one thing that, and I'm gonna talk about it here, um on that, you'll see the education and training. Uh of that twenty-seven, I've kept that the same. We haven't utilized a lot of that in the past. But that's something that right now, um we're into discussions and, and I guess this is a perfect time in regards to that. I'm looking at a school resource officer for Pleasantville, Melcher, Dallas and Bussy. So they, the schools are very excited about that. There, it's something that they're wanting to look at um in doing. Um obviously with the governor's big push right now on school safety and different things, Knoxville has school resource officers, Bella does. The rural side, um we're gonna be, have some meetings coming up and talking about that, but it's a, to me, it's a huge benefit. I mean, I'm building that relationships, different things. I left that in, obviously, if it's a new position, it has to come before you. So we're just in the infancy of that discussion on trying to figure that out and what the cost would be. But uh there are benefits in regards to a school resource officer in those three schools. The vast majority of it would be picked up by the schools with grants, different things to your point on looking at that through the.
Is this a one-time type? I know that you said, you know, you've left it in there, the twenty-seven, but.
Well, that's, you're gonna have, if it's a new position, you're gonna have academy costs, unless you hire somebody certified. Those are all those discussions on trying to figure out where. Where is that dollar amount? Do you hire somebody certified? Do you not? And that's the application process. So it's, it's place marked in there. Obviously, you guys are the ones that have to approve it, so no matter where we get to this point, I mean, if we come back and say, hey, this is what the schools are willing to pay. This is what our county part would be, that would have to be something that you guys would agree upon.
What does it typically cost to send somebody to the academy?
Uh ten to twelve grand probably is a ballpark idea, but then you look at other expenses that, I mean, are associated with that, so. Um going, uh it's also too, just, I mean, on that. That's also something, I guess, that we always place marked on different sides of it. And knock on wood, we've always been increasing our workforce and, and getting from other places. But if somebody was to leave and you have to hire a deputy spot, you're gonna have those costs, so we've always traditionally kept that in there also on it. Uh pretty much the same on things. Down, you're gonna see the next one, the motor vehicle equipment side of it, went from thirty-five down to twenty-five. We're reusing some of the cages, vehicle equipment on that, so you're ten thousand dollars on that side of it going down, which I know is. Important along those lines. Um office equipment repair, obviously, we're down a little bit on that, not eighteen hundred ninety-five, but. But still, still, we're trying to cut to go back, back the other way versus all increases. You'll see the, the one twenty to one fifty. Um that is an increase in regards to, we've always kind of budgeted. If you go back and you look at motor vehicle used expenses on the years before, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-one, twenty-two. Vehicle expenses have went up. I've always tried to absorb that in other areas of my budget on it, but it's at that point now where. Even last year, you know, we're at a hundred and thirty-six, or this year, we're a hundred and thirty-six thousand. On that, I can't keep absorbing those, those vehicle costs because prices are going up. I mean, that's, that's a more realistic number of that hundred and fifty thousand number. We, we're pushing our vehicles out quite a ways. We've reduced, you might have seen, there's a pros and cons in regards to vehicles. Um you no longer, like my chief deputy was the last one that had a Tahoe or whatever. In my opinion, Tahos are more expensive to run. I mean, that the, the cost breaks, the, the fuel, the, you know, or just, there's, it's, they're more expensive. The flip side of that is resale. You're gonna get more out of a Tahoe than Explorer. But there has been the, the concerns about perception in past years on, well, why are they driving Tahos? I mean, why, that, that costs more on different sides. So I've tried to reduce that in regards to Explorers. Um we've went, we no longer have any Tahos in our, our bank or whatever right now, or onto the Ford Explorers. The Ford Explorer, um there's arguments one way or other, whether you're talking to a sheriff in one part of the county or, or part of the state versus the other. I think they've been a great vehicle for us. Maintenance costs are low, fuel economy's good, they still have to get up and go in regards to. A police vehicle side of it, but that's why you're gonna see that change in regards to it. That, that, those numbers.
Do your, I mean, uh how do you do your replacement plan?
We're on a rotation. Once, once you get, um that's another discussion. Tyler's probably went through this at the road department on when you trade vehicles out or don't trade them out. There's some agencies that once a vehicle gets to ninety thousand, they're swapping it and trading it or whatever, because they feel the resale. Or whatever is gonna make up for what the cost is. We've always been one of those that we push vehicles to higher, higher mileage. We don't get as much, but the, you know, keeping them longer seems to be a benefit on ours. Our magic kind of numbers are on the hundred and twenty thousand mark or whatever. Um Troy liked his Tahoe. I mean, and my chief deputy didn't really wanna get rid of it, takes very good care of it, different things. I don't, do you remember Jeff, where we were at, hundred and fifty thousand maybe on that vehicle before we traded and got a new one? I mean, so there are some, we tried, it, we tried to push out or whatever. I mean, if it's a, it's a, you know, a good vehicle, hasn't caused us a lot of maintenance issues. We're trying to push that out, but that one twenty's kind of that ballpark mileage that we look at.
How often? Does that mean that you trade on an average?
About three to four years, probably.
Every three or four years?
Yeah. Yeah, your, your, your thirty to forty thousand is probably, I mean, that number of mileage, miles per year on an average deputy. Side of it.
Who, who does the configuration for? You can buy a whole vehicle, right?
Yeah, so we, we buy, so right now, most of being these Explorers, most of them are coming from Stivers. We put out a bid on different things along those. We're always looking for the cheapest price of a vehicle. But Stivers does have an install area in their shop or everything, so a lot of times they'll bring it right from out on. Stivers Ford back to their install place and that's been who's been doing it recently for us. Which has been cost savings, I mean, and efficient along those lines. They've done a good job. Uh if you keep on going down, um or I guess that's the price of vehicle side, skip to the next one. Full-time employees, that's that four percent that you see on that. If you guys ultimately end up saying, I mean. Jason, you can't have four percent for your employees, that's the numbers, that's gonna be fluctuating, changing. Uh we're down on the part-time wages like I talked about, we're kind of staffed pretty good on the full-time side. So that, you'll see a nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollar deduction in regards to that going down. Same, same, same. You're gonna see a five thousand dollar uh reduction in radio and related equipment. Side of it. Um right now, we have obviously uh our handheld radios, the radios and stuff we have are, are. Knock on wood, good, good batteries, good use, different things. So I'm not expecting next year, we're gonna have much on that radio side. So we're able to reduce that by five thousand. You'll see same, 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 going down through um. Part-time, same thing in regards to that reduction. It's a twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollar reduction. In regards to the part-time employee costs.
What, but your jailer's above, what, you have it at five point seven five?
Yep, and that's, that, the lieutenant's part of that on that point seven five side of it, and that's that four, that's along with it. So that when you do the ultimately side, that's that increase too. So depending on your comp board recommendation, that's gonna fluctuate and change.
So you're saying the one point seven five, cause you put four for them also?
Yes, yeah, yeah, exactly, yep. Uh coming down through, uh you'll see an increase from on the. I'm just going with the last group of numbers, here's the two thirty to zero five. If you see that, go, went from a hundred thousand in regards to food and provisions up to one twenty. Um obviously inflation costs, food costs are coming up. That's a, that's a pretty fair amount in regards to. Because depending on number of inmates we hold, that, that fluctuates. I mean, if you have more, it's up, if you have less, it's down. So that's a pretty fair ballpark number on that. Keep on going down, same, same. You're gonna see a slight increase under telephone service of, from eleven thousand dollars to twelve thousand dollars. I mean, and that's just cost of telephone coming up, thousand dollars in telephone service. Uh education training, actually, I tried to make that up, so I went down a thousand on that. To make that a wash in regards to the telephone versus educational and training services and then same, same. Uh back, pre-employment physical, electrics and lights, the same. Water use is actually down a little bit. We just, and the only reason for that is we budgeted high last time, so it's a slight decrease from eleven thousand, six sixty. We're just trying to sharpen the pencil and we think that nine thousand dollars is gonna be a more accurate mark of where that is, just making it more accurate. Same, same. You're gonna see on the, so you're on the ten thousand, if you look at household and institutional. It's a six, three, four, zero, five.
Yeah.
That one, so that one went up um by, actually, it's a five thousand dollar increase above that thirteen, nine, five, four. What we did is we moved clothing and, and uh the expenses in regards to clothing. So when we were trying to get rid of some of those different line items, that's for the jailers like clothing, uniforms, along those lines. That's where you see that increase.
Okay.
Uh keep going down, nothing, nothing really there. If you go back, we're under administration, so one hundred, zero, five, one, zero, one. Um that's salaries administration side of it. That's a, actually, that's just better. I mean, accounting. We were high last year in regards to that salary. In regards to like Jenny, there are civil clerks and different things. So the sixty-five, zero, zero, six is a more accurate number. So that's why you see that uh slight increase, but it's a more accurate number than what was there before. Clerk, same.
Then you put yourself at your sixteen point, yeah, you put yourself at the comp, on the. Then you put yourself at your sixteen point, yeah, you put yourself at the comp on the page before.
Where are we at?
Back before. Before, yeah, you have yourself, assuming that's just, yeah, that's you, just you.
Yes, yep, 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 exactly.
One fifty-eight.
Yep, that, and that's a comp board. Yep, that's what you guys down the road are gonna do on that one, correct? Yep. Um, and those, like I said, those are just those slight increases are more accurate in regards to, um, Jenny, Jeff and Jen. Um, same, same, same. You'll see document security, shred it. See the shredding, that's just cost of business going up in regards to our shred it contract. Uh, employee mileage was at three thousand, I went down to one thousand. We don't utilize that a lot. We, I mean, most of our vehicles and different things, I mean, we're able to decrease that by two grand. Um, you're gonna see, okay, so you're gonna see on this next one, it's a decrease of ten thousand. But don't, I mean, that's, don't get too excited on that, because actually, it's just been moved in regards to the technology side of things. One of the questions we've always, you know, I've been really working with Drew and Nicole, computers. Computers, technology, where it is. Um, Tyler mentioned in his, in regards to the presentation where he gave. I mean, and I don't know if he's a part of these discussions with IT or not, but, uh, your copier on redoing the contracts. I think Lisa or maybe some of the other, there's a big push right now on IT on consolidating, changing like our copiers and different things at the office or whatever. So they know more about that than I do. Jeff, are you, were you a part of that? You wanna explain kind of just that side of it?
Well, the IT was- IT was in, uh, negotiations with, uh, possible pricing with a different copier place. Uh, they were looking at bringing some significantly reduced numbers versus our MM IT contracts that we're currently utilizing. And they were also in discussions too about possibly changing some of those fees out of individual line items to more of a across-the-board county expenditure for everybody. But that would be something you'd all have to follow up with Drew and Nicole.
So when you say technology and consulting, what, I mean, is that including-
Yeah, so if you go, if you go below that, I'm gonna show you on both of, hang on one second. Let me pull it up here on the-
And are we just using, what I wanna make sure is, is are we using our IT department more than consulting outside of?
Oh, definitely. We don't, yeah, we don't. I mean, very, very seldom, unless it's like, and, and that's something, a question for Drew and Nicole also. We all kind of at times, you know, body cameras, um, technology and stuff, downloading car cameras and different things. That was, you guys approved that, uh, changeover in regards to some of that ARPA money. That's all in the process right now. Actually, I had staff in this morning at three o'clock in the morning with that generator thing you approved. And then now on the IT side of it. But we utilize, I mean, Nicole and Drew, I, I mean, they've been fabulous to work with on that changes. But it's always one of those on who's paying for what. I mean, and, and they've been very good. I mean, they'll absorb some of it sometimes, we absorb some of it sometimes. Um, but if you look at like that, uh, I just wanted to show you on that. Let me find it real quick here. That's, well, that's, I guess it shows right below it in regards. If you're looking at that four, two, one, zero, five and the four, two, one, zero, five, four, six, five, you'd see the negative of a ten thousand. Part of that went from sixty to, um, seventy-five, sixty on the increase. So actually, there's not that big of a savings. I mean, it just, it's just a moving of those in regards to service agreements that are along those lines. Next page, education training, same, everything's the same. Dues and memberships actually went from two thousand to twenty-five hundred. Office equipment was a decrease. We went from four thousand down to two thousand, if you see that one along those lines. We're down at law enforcement memorial fund. Are you guys, are we-
Yeah, I was gonna ask you about that.
Okay.
Circled.
Yep, yep, that's a fifteen thousand dollar, went from five thousand up to fifteen thousand. Um, we've had that in our, Jake, how long, in our accounting side of things? We, long time, we don't, we haven't used a lot, it's canine funds, different things. Dallas, right now, our lab, Deputy Short or Sergeant Short actually has right now that we utilize, the Black Lab is getting a little bit older. Um, we're still gonna utilize him for, uh, PR events, the schools. He's a very, you know, docile dog along those lines. But that amount in there, from, going from the five to the fifteen. Um, I have a gentleman that's, uh, um, from Nebraska that comes to the races all the time, that has funded canines for the, like Nebraska State Patrol, a lot of different areas. He approached me or whatever and said, hey, I know your dog's getting up there in age. I'm willing to donate a dog to you, which is a significant savings versus buying a dog. So, but there's also training that goes along with that. That's, that amount is the training side, it's not the cost of the dog, but that's why we bumped that up.
But that comes out of memorial fund though? That seems odd.
A lot of times people, uh, donate because of the dog and love having a canine.
He had a budget of twenty thousand in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, we didn't, and we didn't utilize, yep, we didn't utilize it then. We only used that four eighty-four in regards to it. So actually, yeah, so actually, it's a down five thousand from what the budget amount was there.
I think this started from an initial tragedy, I think, some years ago. Hasn't been here forever. Um, and where to put the money and to keep it. So like, just, I don't wanna jump in.
Yeah, no.
Cause it's, but like, like, it has a different fund. So that, that's cash in, there's no tax dollars or anything like that going to it. So it's cash in, uh, fund balance, if it isn't there, it's, it has its own fund balance. So that, so like that one and coming up on commissary and stuff, those are separate ones. So that's where that came from. And I think it started from that tragedy. And then if there's any donations, then I think maybe some, some ongoing maintenance expense for the dog maybe comes out of those. So there's no county contribution going into that that I, that I'm aware of. Just wanted you to be, that has its own fund and its own fund balance, just like his commissary one, just like he'll come up with his forfeiture one of those. So that's all of those, cause it's got its own separate fund number.
Yeah, thank you, Jake, and, but we do have to budget for it. So it's something that we have to show the expense side of it, correct, in order to spend that?
Absolutely, have to budget, and, and that particular fund has seventy-seven hundred dollars in it right now.
Um, moving down through, back to the IPRs side of mental health, uh, actually, that FICA contribution, that's just on the reimbursement in and out, I mean, but we have to show it.
Yeah, cause you have two of those, that's, I was a little, I have highlighted, um.
One is FICA and one's IPRs.
Yeah.
That's the difference between the two.
Yeah, I see this FICA, yeah, okay, this is IPRs.
Yeah, but we had to, we had to add it into the budget, you know, for the reimbursement side of it down the road. Um, there is an increase, obviously, in the IPRs county contribution side of it from the one sixteen to one seventy-seven. You'll see that right between where you were just looking on it. But if, the good news is if you skip down to the health insurance contribution, um, side of things, I have two eighty-one, one eighty-seven, you see that number? That number should be two sixty-five, nine, three. That's with the lower rate in regards to the more accurate of a number. And then on the mental health side, it's actually, uh, nineteen thousand, three, forty, where it's the twenty thousand right below it. So that's nineteen thousand, three, forty is the more accurate number on that. And then actually, if you get down, if you keep looking down, the big, the big difference, and this is where, when I said earlier, beginning of my presentation, where you're gonna be happy at the end of it, on the health insurance contribution, the ten forty, one thirteen, zero, five, under law enforcement communications, I don't know why, I, I'm assuming it was an error on my end, I'll take responsibility for it or at my office or different things. But we, last year, we had budgeted a hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and forty-two for that health insurance county contribution side. Um, I, that might have been a projected number, but it never got changed um, in regards to that budget amount. So where if you go back and you look at previous years, seventy thousand, sixty-four, sixty-two, that more accurate number instead of one seventy-one, five, four, two, should be seventy-four thousand, eight oh six. So you're about a hundred thousand dollar savings on that one. And then if you come to the backside of it, on the next page, uh, most of them are, there's slight increases, but not much. But go to the health and adult correction services.
Yeah.
See that one? One sixty-seven, um, nine seventy, one ten, nine oh seven. And we'll double check these numbers with Lisa and Jake. But I, I think they're, I think for some reason, uh, it was an oversight and that was left in at a higher budgeted amount. But it's gonna be significant in regards to my total number, you know, in regards to the backend of it. So, um, if you go down to the, the last one in regards to that health insurance, the county administration, fifty-five, five oh eight.
So it's all- Instead of the sixty-five, eight eighty-seven?
Exactly, yep. So I said-
What's the total cost savings, Jason?
About a hundred and eighty-two thousand.
What was that, what was that last number, Jason?
Uh, fifty-five? Fifty-five, five oh eight.
Thank you.
Yep, no, and so, so a hundred and eighty-two thousand, Keisha, is kind of that overall. But there are, were, were some of those increases that I had, those increases are probably about seventy thousand. So you're looking about a hundred and ten thousand dollar savings versus the, the net change. Yeah, where you see, I mean, it's not a true a hundred and eighty-two thousand out of my budget. It's that, cause there was some increases that when we went through.
Yeah, cause I, I'm roughly looking at probably your general fund love increase with everything approved would be a little over three hundred thousand. And then, you know, you obviously-
Yeah, comp board, everything else, there's gonna be changes in regards to where, where those numbers per se are. Uh, but that's a fifty-five, five oh eight is that one. Uh, next one, administration tolls is down, I mean, that's that one, that's all part of that. And then obviously, you just have the deputy salaries, the, that rural service basic are all, uh, connected with the comp board. And so that's that fluctuation that you're gonna see on that side. I think that's everything on my end in regards to total. Um, once we get these total numbers plugged in, the, the new numbers, obviously with Jake, that, that final's gonna change a little bit, but that should be our, close to it.
Jason?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, but is, is the sergeant's salary tied in with the comp board?
Yep, it's the chief deputy, three lieutenants and the two sergeants.
Okay, the sergeants are included also?
They are included. So what, actually, so what the sergeants are, is the lieutenant pay and the highest deputy pay, it's halfway in between. That's what, that's that dollar.
Kind of hard to predict it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, until we know. So that's that ballpark idea. Um, and then just as another side of it, but, uh, Daryl Brown up at the courthouse side of it, healthcare, um, under his, it's like, it's a nineteen thousand, one thirty-eight's the new number. But you, it's not something you guys are gonna, I just need to get that to Jake in regards to, um, that number.
So, just so department heads and the board, what I'm thinking of board is that we're gonna go ahead and listen to what everybody has to say. And then Thursday, when we do wrap up, we will go through, we will talk, um, we will, you know, discuss what each, um, department is asking. Um, and then there's some other things, whether, you know, it's the levy rates. We have a list, but anyways, just so everybody kind of knows what we're, what we're looking at.
I understand, and I know there's gonna be tweaks, I mean, on different sides or wherever.
And we'll do comp board then too, so.
But, but overall, um, overall, I'm very happy in regards to the budget aspect side of things, not, not the huge, when you look at, I mean, not huge increases or whatever, and, and part of it's a clerical error. I mean, on, on our end or whatever, but that's, it's good news. I'd much rather have the clerical error where we're giving away. Yeah, where we're giving money back versus what we originally, or I shouldn't say giving back, the projected, so.
Not budgeting it.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying. Um, last, last two things, um, on mine, and then we'll wrap it up and I'll be under twelve o'clock for us. Uh, I do wanna have discussions, and I don't know if it's now or down the road, opiate settlement funds.
Yeah, we'll have to talk about that, yeah, cause-
But it's, but it, it, obviously sheriff's offices across the state have been utilizing, and we need to, and all, we're talking from Jake and talking from, um, mainly Jared.
Jared, yeah, I, I plan to discuss that with Jared a little bit. So Jared, if you're listening, um, you know, yeah, I'd like to discuss.
I think Jared is listening and, um, ready to talk about that.
Yeah, so it's something that there's, well, multiple different things. But if you look across the state, a lot of that opiate settle money is being utilized in sheriff's offices. One of the things that I, we don't know, you talked about those, um, what-ifs, Keisha, in regards to mental health. That's something that we have to keep in the back of the mind. If the regions are no longer gonna say, pay for medication for inmates and things that we've been, knock on wood, lucky, they've still been paying ours, but come July one, those costs, those changes, those things are part of it. Um, so I'm gonna get a list from the other sheriff's offices, you know, on different ones that have utilized it or other counties on, hey, these are some of those levels, these are some of the things they've used that money for. And I'll have, I'll put that together. But, but when you talk to like Appinose County, we just had a Southeast Iowa sheriff's meeting. And at that meeting, it was a huge discussion on using that money. And a lot of the sheriff's offices are, are using it. I mean, and-
Do we, do, on that opioid money, is that, is that one-time money?
Is it use and lose?
Well, I think, I, I, probably Jake and Jared, cause it goes to county attorneys. But we're close, we're close to six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I do know that they're substantial, and I do know that Jared and I have briefly talked about it.
In our, in our pocket.
Yeah.
So when we start to look at those things, there's one thing, one of them, the, the vast majority of the sheriff's offices in Southeast Iowa, um, there's a thing called the Sheriff's App or whatever, the Sheriff's App or whatever is on, on your, like, instead of somebody coming to our Facebook page and having to look at every different things, they put the Marion County Sheriff's Page or Appinose or Henry County or Washington County or whatever on their phone. They click on it, and a lot of the stuff that we normally have in our press releases, um, resources, the tabs, the things that are there, it has been hugely successful. Um, and it's an eligible expense for the opiate funds, because you can put resources and everything else for the sheriff's office, for the jail, for all that side of things onto it. Um, cost, I'm guessing, is probably fifteen thousand or whatever to get it up and running. And then probably a four to five thousand annual cost, different things. But it's a huge benefit of what those, they're like, hey, talk to your board supervisors, figure out how to do this, because it has been-
Who's it a benefit for?
Yeah, all, all the citizens. So, so like right now, our, I mean, and Emily probably knows this better than I, but on, or, or actually IT side, but on our Facebook, I mean, site is the number one site. I mean, in Marion County on downloads, that's more of a Drew, Nicole question, different things.
Who's in jail?
Yeah, who's in jail, all, all the things, well, that's part of it. All, all those, all those things that go along with it and resources, we, we do have a lot of resources, different things. But, but it allows the general public to click on it. Muscatine County did it, I mean, and it, it skyrocketed the number of, I mean, resources or people accessing resources under, I mean, so. It, it's not just, it's not just every John Doe citizen, but also people struggling with addictions. I mean, and they don't wanna-
Well, that makes more sense if somebody does have too much time on their hands.
Exactly, some, exactly, somebody that, somebody that wants to go find the resources, mental health, substance abuse, things that are there, they can go online, they can click on it, sends them a direct link to resources, different sides of it. And it's, it's been very beneficial along those lines. So it'd be something, just I'll, I'll make that proposal down the road, but it's not a huge amount, but there's other things like that. And Lieutenant Kias, obviously, with the jail.
Well, the initial cost, it could be covered, it's the ongoing cost.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, I don't know how those opioid funds are worth, I mean, I don't know if, yeah.
And I'll get, how much do they generate on it? I mean, does that go up like ten thousand, twenty thousand, five thousand?
I think Jared's gonna talk about it tomorrow too.
Okay.
So, um, uh, it's a settlement. So there's, there's settlement, um, schedules and it's not always the easiest to get ahold of. So, I mean, it's not an ongoing lifetime deal, it's got years and some of them prepaid. Um, so there are some coming in that will come in annually, but it's not a lifetime deal. There's, my only standpoint of it is, is there are, um, we have to do all the reporting and it's very specific. And it has, all I say, it has to meet the allowable uses.
Yeah, yep, and that's where I'll, I'll do the background information from those other counties and from their auditors, board supervisors, different things. They, they were all talking about, hey, we're, this is what we're using the cell we're paid for. But I wanna guarantee, you know, that it's an eligible expense along those lines that comes with it.
Where do we find where those expenses are allowed? Which, which expenses are eligible expenses for reimbursement?
Um, I'm not sure, there's settlement pages and things out there. Again, I think, I think Jared maybe is gonna talk about this tomorrow.
Probably a whole book on that.
There is, yeah, right, so. There's probably gonna have to be a task force type of thing, you know, possibly to look at it and-
Well, and, and I think, uh, Lindsay from Public Health, I think there's discussions, I think she might have some, I mean- Well, and, and I think, uh, Lindsay from public health, I think there's discussions, I think she might have some, I mean, requests along the public health side of it, Jared's probably going to have some requests. But it's just, it's just something that you as supervisors, as we're talking about the budget side of it.
We can't buy rock with it.
We, we've kind of, we've kind of left it lay for a long time, but we need to try to figure out, are, are there things that when you guys are looking at budget, but the reason I'm bringing up now, when you're looking at my budget, are there things that are eligible? Now, to, Steve and I have had this conversation in the past, it's like, it can't just be that one-time deal. We got to be able to, you know, how do we support it in the future?
That's the difficulty, yeah.
But, but I think, but I think, and I don't know, Jake, like you said, on paying ahead, not paying ahead, whatever. But there's definitely benefits to being able to utilize it, but we just have to follow the guidelines that, what it's truly eligible for. And I do know sheriff's offices are one of those eligible, not everything, but there's, there's a lot more. And, and the reason sheriff's office a lot of times, it's connected with the jail. I mean, that's the, the background and why, why they're eligible to be used on that side, so. Other questions you have for me at this point? I know there'll probably be more down the road on it. Uh, no, no, no employees working from home.
Okay, very good. So as I promised, I'm going to ask every department head, do you have any work from home employees? And what's your plan to get them back in the office?
I, I even during COVID couldn't have employees working from home or whatever, so yeah, that's one of those that, uh, I mean.
Yeah. So, just so everybody is aware, tomorrow, okay? Um, at nine AM we start, um, we have a list, you know, HR, treasury, attorney, um, public. If you guys could just all come and be ready to go, because some may, will take a little shorter time, some take a little longer, but just so we can keep moving, um, because we have several on the list the next two days, so. I'll try to go in that order, but, uh, um, I do know development needs to be towards the last and, um, yeah, so on there, that's on Wednesday, so, yeah, and maybe Veterans Affairs wants to come a little earlier.
One thing for those listening that I found out this morning or whatever, that, uh, I think, and I think Jake mentioned or somebody, Lisa or somebody, but it's only from nine to noon is the only time you're doing it. I was thinking it was all day today on, on the scheduling, so for any other department heads-
We're just starting at nine, hoping to be done by-
Yes.
It will be if you don't quit talking.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, guys. That, there's no further discussion, I'll entertain, uh, motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
McCombs, hi, Mueller.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.